Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Zach Bashirtosh.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the August 3, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Bashirtosh.
Here.
Vice Chair Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Cor.
Here.
Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas. Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the city planning division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project, along with their recommendations to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anybody in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for non-consent public hearing, item 6A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak when that item is called later in the meeting.
Agenda item 3B, Non-Agenda.
One moment, please.
Oh, sure.
No, you're okay. Does anybody want to speak? Yeah, please step to the, introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Edward Robinson, community social worker, Army veteran. The Social Servant is the name of my agency. Reason I'm here today is because I would like to gently suggest your commission's consideration of the redevelopment of blighted and vacant properties and parcels within the city of Bakersfield. Through my research, I've noticed that there are no policies which directly address the acquisition of properties through adverse possession. And I recognize that it is an Old English common law, but it is very much still alive and well today. Looks like the statutory period for paying the taxes, open, hostile, notorious possession, it's about five years. So I began to move in that direction, because I do complete some litter cleanups in these areas in order to have a positive impact on some of the residents in these neighborhoods by increasing the curb value and appeal of some of these properties. But it's concerning, because one, I'm unable to get any guidance, real guidance from the city on these topics. And then whether it's through, whether I'm acquiring these properties through, I think it's the Brownfield Site Reuse Program, or the Economic Opportunity Area Program, it would be helpful to someone like me who has very good intentions, as well as who's in touch with various community members, community groups within these neighborhoods that were conducting litter cleanups, if I could have some guidance and support from the city in our efforts. So again, I'd just like to respectfully and gently urge your commission to consider making some adjustments to the policy that specifically address the acquisition of properties, even what that open, hostile, notorious possession should look like, whether it's placing a fence on it. Well, what's the regulatory criteria for how far the fence should be? I mean, do I gotta redo the sidewalk now? Do I have to put a no trespassing sign? Can it be over six feet? Does it need to be four feet? These are points of discussion that would be very helpful to have identified through policy. So again, thank you for your time, and I'd just like to suggest that there be some sort of policy to address this legal component of adverse possession, acquiring land through adverse possession. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I did that backwards, huh? Maybe? Madam Clerk, I think we're on item 3B, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Non-agenda item 3B, Public Statements.
Does anybody in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? So please come forward and state your name. I believe we went through that. Is anyone else seeing none? And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed on the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner request specific items to be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items.
Commissioner Biddle.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Coman, thank you. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Motion passes with Commissioner Lomas absent and Commissioner Neal abstaining.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 5, There Are No Consent Public Hearing Items.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Okay, now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. This is a continuation of public hearing 6A that was originally opened at July 20, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. The hearing was opened, and at the time, the applicant requested that it be continued to today, today's meeting, in order to provide additional time to respond to various inquiries. I want to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak, those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bashirtosh. Commissioners, member of the audience, thank you for attending tonight's hearing. As you noted, this is a continuance from two weeks ago, the July 20 meeting, so I will give a succinct presentation of the project and focus a little bit more on options. This project is located northeast corner, Highway 99 and White Lane. The request is for a zone change from commercial to multifamily. In addition, for consistency, there will be a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from commercial to residential. And this is to facilitate a change in use from a hotel to apartments. This project site consists of four structures, although it appears to be one, 151 dwelling units ranging up to size of 292 square feet, includes a swimming pool, spa, laundry room, and a community space. There are security cameras on site, there's rooftop lighting, there's a wrought iron fence around the majority of the site, however, there is a chain link fence along the Caltrans right away, as you see in the picture in the lower left-hand corner, and there is a approximately 30-foot section that is down that could be easily used by transients to go back and forth, and therefore, it will be a requirement that this fence be put up and the applicant, or I should say, the owner is in the audience, and he can discuss that. They do have a ticket in with Caltrans to get that fence repaired. And if this project is approved, there will be enhanced landscaping that'll go along the site. As you noted, this was considered at the July 20 meeting. During public testimony, only the opposition spoke. There was a rebuttal period where the applicant spoke, and then the opposition spoke and reiterated their concerns. Following some comments from the dais, the applicant did request a two-week continuance, which was to today. Subsequent to that meeting, staff did identify that the owner did cease paying transient occupancy tax, so therefore, it is a conversion of a hotel to an apartment complex. We did identify, though, that they have pulled the necessary building permits, and those were final, and some comments on that were like the re-roof and the fire suppression, so those were final. Staff also did multiple site visits. We had people from, or I should say, employees from the building department, planning department, code enforcement, do inspections, drive-bys, and onsite inspections. Even at 2:00 in the morning, we had staff go out. It was identified that there is an onsite day manager who is there Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and they do have rules and regulations that the residents must follow, and those were attached to the staff report. They also have private security that is there onsite 10 hours a day. Typically, that is from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, but those times can vary to reduce predictability, and that is seven days a week, including holidays. They also conduct 30-minute documented patrols, so they have documents on all their 30-minute walkarounds. Staff also consulted with the Bakersfield Police Department. It was noted that the service calls have increased, and that was shown in your staff report. There are some reasons for that. Number one, over the past year, residents have gone from approximately 24 rooms to over 100 rooms, and this type of resident does have usually a few more callouts than would a more affluent resident. But Bakersfield Police Department did note that this site was removed from their top 10, I don't want to call it a hit list, but they have a top 10 list that police officers frequent because of more high-level calls, and this site has been removed from that. So Bakersfield Police Department has seen improvement at this site. There was also a neighborhood meeting conducted with the applicant, and it was, some of the neighbors were invited that had given their information that was conducted this past Tuesday. Staff was not in attendance, so I will let the owner speak to that outcome. So options for tonight, your planning commission has really five options to consider. You may recommend that the city council approve the project as proposed by the applicant. And again, that would be a general plan amendment and zone change from commercial to residential. You could recommend that the project be approved with a more restrictive zone classification. And in this case, that would be the PUD or Plan Unit Development Combining Zone, so it would be R4 PUD or the Exclusive PUD Zone. Probably a little bit more information on that. The PUD Zone is to provide for creative and innovative design of the site while ensuring substantial compliance with the general plan and the intent of the municipal code. Conditions of approval can be added to provide adequate standards necessary to protect and maintain property values and provide or protect community amenities, which would foster and maintain the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. These conditions, because it's a planned unit development, are primarily related to the site, not the activity. So if you needed more lighting, construction of a wall instead of a fence, landscaping, you can ask for more landscaping, you could ask for more open space requirements, more amenities for the residents or architectural designs of the building. That's what the PUD conditions are for. The next two items are refer back to staff or a continuance. And if this project is referred back to staff, it would be due to the fact that either you're requesting more outreach of the applicant with the community, or there are some questions that can't be answered tonight that need more time, and it's undetermined how long that will take. If it is referred back, one thing to remember is that this includes a general plan amendment, which the state only allows city council to consider four times a year, and those are generally for the city, February, May, August, and November. So if this project is referred back to staff, they would miss the August window, and this project would go to city council in November. You could recommend that the public hearing remain open and continue to a date certain, which would be August 17 in two weeks, and that would be if we could get you that information in a quick turn. Keep in mind, a two-week continuance really only allows staff about five days to prepare a report and get that back in the system out for the public. We have public notification timelines that we have to meet, so we will only have five days. So a continuance really does not do much good in this case, because we wouldn't be, we wouldn't allow enough time to get back to you in two weeks with the information you requested. So therefore, we would recommend, if you're going to go down this route, that you would refer this back to staff. You could also recommend that city council deny the project. We would take that recommendation forward to city council as a denial, and if the city council upheld that denial, your recommendation, the applicant could not return for one year with the same general plan amendment zone change, unless there was new relevant information that would change why they should proceed forward. The applicant also has options on this. They could accept the Planning Commission decision. They could appeal the Planning Commission decision, in which case, we would take that appeal forward to city council. And they could also withdraw the application from consideration, and that can be done anytime between now, or if there is a refer back, they could withdraw it during that time, or they could withdraw it if you make a motion tonight for approval that goes forward to city council, they could withdraw it anytime during that period. If they do withdraw the application, just be advised that they could revert this building back to the use of a hotel. In essence, all they really need to do is start paying transient occupancy tax, and I believe they have a minimum lease requirement of six months or a year. They would have to stop that. Other than that, these same individuals could reside in this structure as a hotel, as long as he's paying transient occupancy tax, and no more review would be required. The applicant could also return to the Planning Commission with a conditional use permit, and a conditional use permit allows really for specific use to be permitted in a zone district under certain conditions to ensure the use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In this manner, the conditions could be the same as the PUD conditions that were previously mentioned. Also, based on their business model, you could have conditions that comply with their business models. So if their business model says we will have onsite management Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, you can make that a condition of approval. What you would need to be cautious on is if you wanted to make that seven days a week, you would need to have a nexus to make that condition, to make it seven days a week, and that nexus cannot be based on income level. Conditional use permit would also allow for project compliance monitoring, meaning you could ask staff to return in six months or a year, so you could evaluate how that conditional use permit is going, and if need to be, you could modify conditions at that time. And with a conditional use permit, although it runs with the property, not with the owner, so the subsequent, if the owner did sell this property to a different operator, they would have to comply under those same conditions. Let's just say the future owner did not want to operate apartments. If this was a conditional use permit, they could revert it back to a hotel without the need to go through a general plan amendment or zone change. I would like to note that it has already been established that multifamily in a C2 zone does work within this area, within 200 or 300 feet, excuse me, there are already two existing multifamily dwellings that are in the C2 zone. So a conditional use permit, it may be a little bit of a challenge to deny a conditional use permit, because precedence has been set in this area. The applicant, and when I say applicant, I'm interchangeable with owner, they could also change this to be supportive housing or transitional housing instead of apartments. And although I don't like reading slides, I think this is necessary. This is the state's definition, which has been incorporated into the municipal code. And supportive housing is housing with no limit on length of stay that is occupied by the target population, and that is linked to onsite or offsite services that assist the supportive housing resident in retaining the housing, improving his or her health status, and maximizing his or her ability to live and, when possible, work in the community. And target population are persons with low incomes, who have one or more disabilities that could include mental illness, substance abuse, and may include individuals exiting from institutional settings, veterans, and homeless people. Transitional housing, this would qualify also as buildings configured as a rental housing but operating under program requirements that require the termination of assistance and recirculation of the assisted unit to another eligible program recipient at some predetermined future point in time, which shall not be less than six months from the beginning of the assistance. It's important to note that both of these are considered residential uses by the state and only subject to the requirements and restrictions that you would apply to other residential uses. And the ability for you to make findings to deny a supportive housing or transitional housing are even greater than you would in just approving a CUP or denying a CUP. The applicant could also use a California Senate or Assembly Bill if they wanted to change how they were operating or how they were conducting some of the improvements. And I would note that there were over 2,600 bills introduced in the California Legislature at the beginning of the '23 session, although that's coming to an end on September 24. This diagram shows some highlights of just the housing bills themselves, and they range from streamlining the process, upzoning, homeless, senior housing, veteran housing, and some of these, depending how they do, they remove local jurisdictional control if residential development meets certain criteria, meaning they could potentially turn this into apartments using one of these bills in compliance with that bill, and therefore, it would not require a conditional use permit, as long as it met development standards. Now, I know the neighborhood also has concerns. There are several options for the neighbors to consider, too, and I would note that homelessness is not a city, it is a citywide challenge and not limited to this specific area. And it's a fair statement that the city, nonprofit agencies, and businesses are working together to implement those solutions. Specifically on this site, if some of the residents identified issues with the site specifically, let's just say there are, and they should have the ability to review the rules and regulations, if there's clothing hanging from the rails, they would have the ability to contact the onsite manager directly and the owners in the audience and can provide more information on that. I would note, there's also vacant lots that are surrounding this site, and if there happens to be graffiti, illegal dumping on these lots, potholes, if there's abandoned vehicles on these lots, and it was mentioned at the last meeting, the Bakersfield mobile app would be the way to report those items, and the link is there. If there's trash and debris or encampments, code enforcement and their telephone numbers listed on the screen is the place to contact them. I would note encampments are moving out of the code enforcement realm, more into the Bakersfield Police Department. And as with any Bakersfield Police Department, you have, if it's an emergency issue, please call 911. If it's a non-emergency, and that would be like burglary, theft, destruction of property, non-domestic violence, assault, suspicious activities, the non-emergency line is also listed on the screen. Would also note, neighbors also need to advocate for themselves. The Neighborhood Watch Program was established in 1972, and is a way to getting to know each other and becoming familiar with the neighbor's habits and vehicles, so that they know when something is suspicious or out of the ordinary. This is a team concept of neighbors working together to improve home security and look out for each other. This is also a partnership with the Bakersfield Police Department. And community relations specialist DeeDee Zamora, with a telephone number there, she is assigned to this area, and she would be a good contact about information available for the resources and services for a Neighborhood Watch Program. And in February of 2023, just this year, through the Public Works Department, we have the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, includes five goals, and one of those, two of those actually, one, to reduce excessive traffic volumes and cut through traffic on local residential streets, and another is to improve neighborhood quality of life. And again, this is through traffic calming devices, and Public Works Department will take applications submitted by residents, and they will evaluate the location, they'll engage with the community, they'll select eligible traffic calming tools and prioritize traffic calming projects, and this may be something that the owners on that street may find useful. With that, staff did not receive any written correspondence, either in favor or in support of this project, but obviously, there are people in the audience who would like to speak, so we therefore recommend that your commission take what's in the staff reports presented to you, listen to the public testimony, and make a decision, and at this time, staff is recommending approval of the general plan amendment and zone change. That completes staff's presentation.
Okay, this is a continuation of the public hearing from July 20, '23 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Hello, I'm Justin Swanson, representing the applicant for this project. We have several people here to speak in favor of the project. We're going to start off with the manager, Tasha, who's going to share some info about the programs at the facility and some other items, and also has a short video to play about one of the former residents. So, Tasha?
Down a little bit. Good evening. So I just wanted to touch a little bit more on Mr. Johnson's staff report. I know that I was unable to make it to the last meeting, but I actually, Tasha Ross.
Ross.
Yes, sorry, I'm the property supervisor for the onsite facilities. And just to touch a little bit more on those, so we do have rules in place for the tenants that currently are on the property. I can provide a copy of that if you need. We also have a few of the programs that we do work with, and I can give those off as well. So we work regularly with Flood Ministries, Open Door Network, the Veterans Association, and we also host regular monthly outreach programs. And so we bring in anywhere between 10 to 20 different local vendors, outreach, security, we reach out to BPD, we actually had a couple of people at the last meeting, church services, aging and adult services, anything that somebody might need just to kind of either get back on their feet or fill in for why they've come to our property. So veterans, veterans assistants, we have them come, and they can speak to their tenants for anything that they can provide for them. So that is something that we do, we do that about monthly. We actually have one coming up at the Blanco for those services. And we do have rules that each tenant must follow, so that does actually hold them accountable. And right now, we do have a video that we would like to show you. It's just a testimony of some of the tenants that actually live on one of our properties.
At the Rio, it's been pretty fun, like the pool and stuff like that.
It is a good place. I'm grateful for the places that have taken the homeless, the penniless, the people with kids that need a home and brought them in. This has been excellent for that.
Well, my favorite thing is the people. I love how they take care of their units and everyone that stays here.
Well, I got a job. I work at the garlic factory. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And you enjoy that?
Yes, ma'am, of course. Benefited, better take care of myself. My little truck just broke down, so thankful to this place, the Rio.
You know, it gave me more self-esteem, I'm living on my own, you know, which I haven't done in quite a few years, and just being a better person and a better man.
Where will I go from here? I was just talking to a friend here today about that, about staying here after my year is up. I was seriously thinking about that, because I like this place, I like the Rio.
Well, through you guys and your help, he's trying to help me get a place once my lease is up here and my year is up, and it's once my lease is up here and my year is up, and it's almost up.
The staff at the Rio Marada is going to help me, make me a better person. I'm going to get my own apartment. That's my goal.
Well, I see this place as kind of like a stepping stone. It's just the beginning, and I know that there's more to come out of this place. It's a nice place. I enjoy this place very much. It's opened a lot of opportunities to myself to better myself and actually to progress. And there's not many places like it.
Well, getting my life back in order to where eventually I'll be able to own an apartment complex one day and to give back.
Well, my girls from here, basically getting to a bigger home after this, my kids, and just basically becoming a better man and a father.
The Rio gives people chances to do things that they couldn't do before. And they also have, they have programs here that help older people, younger people, whatever. And it's a community, and it's a good community.
This place gives you a sense of being, it gives you a sense of belonging. It's a community that, you know, everybody's like-minded here.
They've given me a job here at the front desk. They've given me a nice one-bedroom room, and it's just, it's positive here. They have a lot of sources that they help, want to help people, only if the people want to be helped.
I'm gonna be real truthful. I heard some bad things about this Rio through the shelter. I'm just going to tell you the honest guy truth. You can listen to what other people say, but if you don't give it a chance, how would you know? I blocked out the negative. I asked God to please send me somewhere where you feel comfortable being, because I'm out here by myself, I don't have no family. I feel safe here, like seriously. Y'all, come to this place, give this place a chance. Don't think about what other people are saying. You have to come see for yourself. This is my home, I love it. I'm gonna be here until I'm ready to go on until they say, "Get out of here." But that's not gonna happen.
Thank you for watching that. And we also have one of our prior tenants here as well, her name is Tanisha Johnson. And I would just like her to come up and say a few words as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tanisha Johnson. And like Tasha said, I am a former resident of the Rio Marada. And I just want to start off by saying that a little over two years ago, me and my then-five-year-old daughter, life happened for us. And we ran into a housing crisis and ended up a resident of the Rio Marada. And all I can say is, I'm going to get emotional because I knew all those people. I've seen, I was with all those people in the video. Support, like I was supported there, you know, like I witnessed people get the mental health services they needed. We had meat, we had people come in from the outside with clothing. We had pantry once a week for the people that needed food. You had, we had onsite case manager that referred people out to the needed resources that they needed, right? Never once did I feel unsafe there, and I'm a single mom. It was just me and my daughter there, right? Security was there, they were on point all the time. And the management, they just, they supported me what I needed to do. They were there for Halloween and Christmas for my baby because times were hard for us. You know, I was trying to find my footing and find my way back into the community. And it was just a, it was just a very supportive and loving environment for people that, you know, run into, you know, needing help at that time, right? And I have then transitioned out of the Rio. I am employed with Clemmer &amp; Company right now as an onsite manager at another complex. And I have then re-entered into my field of expertise as a substance abuse specialist. And I just want to say that I'm thankful for the Rio and Clemmer &amp; Company for the things that they do. They're awesome. That's all I have, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reed Lovin. I am one of two owner-operators for the security company BL Solutions. My partner, Richard Garrett, and I are both prior law enforcement. We both had careers with the Kern County Sheriff's Office. He retired as a lieutenant. I ended my career as a sergeant with the Sheriff's Office. Between the two of us, we have near 40 years of experience. It's kind of humbling that we're not on the top 10 most concerned sites. I think that speaks to the message of the company that owns both the Rio Marada and the Blanco. It shows to their commitment. It shows, or is part of the narrative, that this is a story that's much, much bigger. And from an observer, as a sergeant, for a period of time, I was in charge of the daytime operations for Metropolitan Bakersfield. They call it the one squad. Part of that was the homeless outreach with the Sheriff's Office and coordinating with other organizations, including Flood, to mitigate, and primarily our efforts were focused in the kind of all of it new scenario at the time. So I can speak as an observer and as an expert on the law enforcement topic and security. This is a story of evolution and growth. This community has gone from a bit of chaos, if truth be told, to we see people that are actively planting flowers with their own money. We see people sweeping the parking lots because they care and have pride of ownership. This empowerment where people from certain life paths have a huge distrust of law enforcement and have not had positive experiences with law enforcement. And instead of not reporting, they're coming to us or they're even contacting law enforcement themselves. I don't have the truth, but this would be anecdotal. But I would think that it'd be reasonable to believe that a part of the increased calls for service in the area, but the reduction of major crime and the removal of that top 10 list would be a symbol of empowerment from the residents that are taking a stand in ownership of their own lives and seeking progress. I'm not going to pretend to say that there are no problems. We deal with incidents on a regular basis. But I also know that the incidents that we deal with are much more easily remedied. De-escalation is easier, communication is more fluid. And I've got to tell you, that's really a positive thing. You can imagine some of the things we saw as law enforcement. And we're not seeing that here, what we're seeing is people coming together. I thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Sadeh, I'm one of the owners of the properties. What I can say about these projects is that we are trying to come in and improve the community. Yes, there is a transition period, but as you saw even from the police statistics, things are getting better. I think that even the statistic, by the way, we've been working with the police department for many months on these things in collaboration because we want to improve the area. We want to make the places as safe as possible for everybody involved. And our original postulated idea about these projects is to give people a second chance in life and reintegrate it into society. And I think that you've seen some of these examples. We have a lot more that we don't want to inundate you with. That said, I want to say something about that statistics of the, of the calls, the increased calls. If you have 10 people in a certain area and you get eight calls, and then you have 200 people in the same area, and now you have 15 calls, you have an increase in calls. But really, you don't have an increase in the problem of the area because per person is actually a reduction of the problems. And I think that is the case of what we have here. We have amazing success with people, and we've been able to have a lot of people that come in and get jobs. We do a lot of social work of our own money that we pay private people that work with us that do social work with these people to get them off drugs, to get them to a job, get them with life skills. That is a side of all the programs that Tasha mentioned that are coming in and working in the properties. So that's from that perspective. I do believe that we are improving the areas rather than being a problem, and we don't want to be a problem. Would I say that we are perfect? By no means. But we are here to improve, and we are always willing to improve. Our management office is always open for somebody. If they have an issue that they can come, give us something in writing so we can address, and we can look at it and do better at. Currently, by law, we can be less discriminatory as to who is there. Once we get the correct zoning, we can be a little more discriminatory on who is there and can improve even on that. So by you guys helping us with this, we can actually even do better. And I think that overall, I think that this project is, I hope at least, that this project is a help to the community because that's really what we're trying to do, aside of being a business. There is an added value to this of being, it's not just business. It is something that needs to be sustainable, but it is, it has a community aspect to it, and we hope that we are helping the people that are there and improving it for everybody around. So that's what we have, and we really hope that you will help us approve it and go forward and do better things. Thank you.
Hello, Edward Robinson. I'm an Army veteran, community social worker, name of my agency is The Social Servant. And while I'm not opposed to this development, I am concerned with the use of residents who are arguably protected class members under the Civil Rights Act in order to support this development. I think that...
Mr. Robinson, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but right now we're speaking to those in favor. There is a section where you can speak for those in opposition of the project.
I am in favor of this. I'm not opposed to this project. That's one thing that I thought that I should put out there in the very beginning of my statement. I am opposed, however, to the use of vulnerable class members, protected class members under the Civil Rights Act in order to justify to your commission the development of this property. I think that that's unethical. And schools of thought, especially the National Association of Social Work, there should be no personal gain or benefit to a person who is providing services to a protected class member. So I think that if we want to make the argument of this project being environmentally sustainable or some governance principles, I think that that would hold far more merit for the development of this program than to discuss the vulnerable classmen, protected class members who arguably are responding to a power dynamic and are arguably coerced into making a statement, right? There's maybe an impression that they may benefit, but I would just like to caution your commission with that consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the project?
Hello, my name's Linda Scott. I just wanted to say that I transitioned out of one of the properties, the Rio. And we were treated with respect. When I first got there, things were kind of shaky, but then everything started coming together. People started coming together. As neighbors, we came together in these apartments, well, what I call apartments. And this place is, is good for people who have nowhere else to go. I was at the homeless shelter, I was homeless. I got into the Rio, I started an LLC business, I now have my own business. I'm doing great, I transitioned out. And it was thanks to Clemmer &amp; Company and the properties that got me where I am today. And I am thankful for them, and so are a lot of other people. So I don't think that they should look at it like it's a bad thing. It's a really good thing, it really is. And it'll get better. That's all I have to say.
Ma'am, can you repeat your name again for the record?
Sorry, Linda Scott. Linda.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hello, my name's Kevin Lively. I've been living in the neighborhood for a few years. The last week has really been a crash course in what you guys all do, and bless your hearts, that stuff is tedious, especially you, man. I don't know how you read through all that stuff, it's tough. But going through it and digging through, a lot of things still aren't lining up for me. You guys kind of touched upon it earlier. The, we do have apartments in C2, so what is, why do they need to change it? What benefits do they stand to gain by changing the zoning of the property? Does it have to do with AB 2011? Is there stuff through there? Are they going to get added bonuses from the states, things like that? I wasn't here last time, I was able to watch on YouTube, which was great because I was able to stop and rewind. Things on YouTube, I watched, like the presentation where whoever was speaking said, and I quote, "It is still operating as a Howard Johnson." Photos taken from Yelp for reviews of Howard Johnson as images of what the apartments/hotels are were really out of date. So I don't know if that was intentional, if that was just misinformed. But again, it didn't sit right with me, something isn't adding up. They mentioned that they've only done work on the roof and the fire sprinkler. They're really proud of the wrought iron fence, but a fence is only as good as the 30-foot gap in it where people can freely walk in and out. I don't know if you're just going to mildly inconvenience somebody to not get into there and affect the tenants. The same with the sardine can of a chain-link fence that they have on the backside. I feel like if this was a sincere effort to help the people living there, there would be more thoughtfulness, more than 10 hours of security a day because, you know, less than half the day. The listings, if you go online, you'll see fully converted apartments. And as I watched last time, I was under the impression that the representatives from the company said they haven't even started converting them yet. But clearly, the photos show on the affordablehousing.com or whatever the other sites are, they have been fully converted, unless they're just pulling photos from another property. I'm not sure if that's the case, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt. You guys said you did site visits, that's great. Did anybody happen to visit last Thursday when there was an all-morning standoff with the police? Where they, they chased a shooting suspect from the auto mall and had a standoff. They brought in the Bearcat. We did, we saw it. There has to be more accountability, that's not safe for the tenants. I don't know what the screening process is, I don't know what's legally allowed in the screening process. But something in the system allowed for a person to live there who could go off and then be pursued by the police as a shooting suspect. Just something to chew on. Let me see what else I have here. Yeah, there's the beautiful video showed and the testimony of the other tenants from the Rio. People do stand to game, there is, I'm not saying that there isn't a homeless problem. We need to help the unhoused, but we also have to make sure... But we also have to make sure that when you're doing it, you're doing it the proper way. Because from a resident like me watching this from the outside, what I'm being told over YouTube that the owner is 2700 White Lane LLC, only to be told later it is the Ocean, or sorry, Blue Ocean Investments LLC. It's like a shell game of misinformation. You're losing my trust in the system. So when more projects with more credibility come forward to help the unhoused, they are also going to basically go against any turbulence that this project and the process that they've been going through is putting up there. So let me see, page two. Do I have any other notes? I have that. Oh, yeah, just a side note. Mr. Johnson, you keep referring people to the app. Just side note, I think, yeah, the mayor's here. Every time I report something to the app, I get a notification that the problem's not there. That's not a solution. So with that being said, you know, Mr. Johnson goes on and basically laying out how this is seemingly inevitable. We need to figure out the best possible route. With the tenants in mind, the people living there, the families living there, if there's family. Again, that's other information. We're told that it's just a single person. We're being told it's family. We aren't being given all the proper information consistently. For their sake, you know, we really need to make sure there's accountability. And where does that fall? So thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the project? Please step forward, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Hello, my name is Deanna DeBont. Nice to see you again. First of all, thank you for the emails from Louis. It was amazing. I did have a couple of, the reason I wasn't able to attend the meeting that was given by the, I thought it was going to be the property owner, which we were told by, and I've got all the copies here, by Louis, that the property owner was requesting a meeting from us. And I just asked, okay, who was the property owner? Because we were told after our last meeting, July 20th, that it was Eli Cohen. But on his information, it said Daniel Sade, which, hello, it's nice to meet you. So I was apprehensive about even going because I didn't even know who we were going to meet and who was going to be at the meeting. Just like Kevin just said, it was like playing whack-a-mole as far as finding out who owned this property. From the time we came here, we did get the LLC was Eli Cohen. Then I found out from Louis, it was Mr. Sade. Then we found out Blue Ocean Equity is a partnership. And there's another person's name I'm not even going to try to pronounce because it was, I, it was a very long name. So we went from there to, I couldn't go to the meeting and our neighbors found out it was Clemmons and Associates here locally. I don't know why it was such a secret of who was running what. We just found out, okay, a year ago. This was purchased June 15th, I believe, 2022. We had friends that actually worked in that hotel and were maids. And they even asked, hey, because they were let go really quickly. We were told the city purchased it. In the newspaper, it said, "This city purchased it." We couldn't get any information for six months until people started moving in. Nobody was at the front desk. Nobody was in the front desk until, I'm saying about 30 days before the sign went up, I guess. I'm not even sure because we started going through the other side because, and it's not the people, these people's stories were amazing. That, we're all for that. My goodness, and our churches were constantly helping people. I was sitting there going, hey, what can I bring down there just to help them? Nobody was at the front desk. Not until last week, or last Friday, I believe. My son went in to see if he could rent a room. And they said, "It's not a hotel. It's, you can have six months or a year." And this week, they told him that you can even, rent will be rezoned and we can give you a week. And I'm like, wait a minute, I thought this was a hotel. She told him he could go over to the hotel next to Burger King. I believe it's Quality Inn or Motel 6. Be that as it may, it seems like everybody was doing what they're, operating normal like they already had the zoning. Again, it's not, I wouldn't feel safe living there. And I don't feel, I was scared to death when you see all those tenants out in the street, out in the, excuse me, in their parking lots, waiting to go back into their facilities. Those aren't the people we're talking about. I have got a list, thank goodness we got together that last week because we did make a neighborhood watch. And thank goodness that we did because the incidents that we had. And I don't know who you're speaking with at the police department. But between January 20th and January 24th, groups of people were dropped off and walked to the hotel. We don't know who they were at all. We've never seen them before. And we know our homeless. I mean, just to let you know, I've lived here all my life. We have, St. Francis has their homeless. We have our homeless. I mean, the people, we do know them. These people that are coming in, I've never seen them before in my life. And some people just like to live on the street. Not that they want to, it's just they feel more comfortable. It's just the way it is. But the groups of people were from the 20th to the 21st. That was the day after the meeting. It just seemed really coincidental. I'm not saying anything one way or another. But this came from the neighbors. On the 26th, there was attempted armed and break-in with an AR-15. I don't know, and the two people were apprehended. I can't tell you any more information because the people, they are incarcerated. They do, I'm not incarcerated, they're held on bail. They have a million dollars on each because they were pre-rolled six days before. The information can be found. I guess you can talk to the police department on that one. The 27th was the shooting in the auto mall. A man was shot close to Family Motors, I believe it was. They did find them in the Blanco. And the very next day, the very next day, same 3:30 in the morning, six police cars come up on the south side and half of the, the people had to come out again. I don't know what was going on. I stayed in my home, but it was going on. On the 28th, a man, noon in the afternoon, hospital gown, nothing on, walking down Mesa Grande, head shaved, no shoes, higher than a kite. We've never had that before. These are the people that we're talking about. We're not talking about the people that we're helping. My goodness, that's absolutely wonderful. And we've had those C2 apartments, the El Petrero and the other one, I don't know what the name of it is. We knew that they were coming in. They tried to open a third one. And the reason they never did on that dirt property, probably, they, because of the school system. The school said, no, there's not enough room for them. We've never had a problem with them. But yet, the August 1st, well, that was a man curled up in fetal position in Shell gas station. I've got all of these pictures and I would have sent them if I knew anybody would answer the emails. And we have sent written emails to our congressman and we have not heard anything from Eric Eris, if I'm seeing his name right. On August 1st, a neighbor called me and she, and told me that this lady is out there with her ring. She's got a video, I've got the video, screaming and yelling, "I'm the police, open up, I am going to kill you." She was there without her husband. Her husband was working out of town and she had her three children. And then August 2nd, the El Petrero manager, which I believe she's here for the apartments. And I've got those pictures. I think she was on the second balcony or the ring was. And there was somebody breaking into another car. I mean boldly breaking in. There was another car right behind it and they started shooting at her husband. There's bullet holes in the apartment. Thank goodness, there was nobody in that parking lot. They haven't had any problems with guns. And then in Valley Plaza, just yesterday, somebody got shot, a woman got shot in the head and they took her bulldog. Yes, we've had a couple of problems with guns in the past in Valley Plaza, but not around our neighborhood, not at all. And I think that's just about it. And I said, I'm all for helping people. I mean, I will be out there helping until the day is long. And so, and our neighbors are the same thing. It's not that we don't like this. What we don't like is not being told what is going on, who's doing it, why they are doing it. And right now, it's still, as far as we know, it's still supposed to be a hotel. Yet this whole entire year, they've been operating some way, shape, or form as what you're saying. And I don't know who's coming in. I don't know who's bringing these people in, but we need help. And we are going to get that neighborhood thing together. We've got the numbers. We've got a lot of people's names. And anybody here that needs their names on the list, you know, we've got it started. We've got over 25 people on our list right now. And we're scared. And we've done everything that we possibly can to help this community, to help our homeless, to help our people in need. And we're not against anybody that's made it. We're against the people that it's attracting. And I don't know why it's attracting it. So, yeah, and we've got to protect them too. It wasn't fair. It wasn't fair to be put in that situation and get pulled out of their apartments. So I thank you, thank you very much for listening.
If there's a few that want to speak in opposition, you're more than welcome to sit in the front row.
My name is Thomas Estrada. And if they said the police department has said it's moved the hotel or the Blanco has moved out of the top 10 list for calls, that's good for the Blanco. But is that include the neighborhood? Or is there more problems in the neighborhood surrounding the Blanco than at the Blanco itself? Because I was at the last meeting and a lot of people spoke, opposition, said they'd been broke into during this past year, stuff removed from their property and lots of other problems. And I've seen it personally. And it hasn't, it hasn't gotten any better recently for the neighborhood, in my eyes personally. Also, referring to the incident at the hotel, the standoff, I was told by management that within 48 hours, that same person was back at the hotel or at the Blanco and was arrested, rearrested, and he had a weapon again. I know it's not the hotel's problem, you know, maybe the city of Bakersfield's problem. But this is what we're dealing with in the nearby neighborhoods of the location. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hello, my, my name is Christopher DeBont. And I've, my grandparents have lived in the neighborhood. I've lived in the neighborhood all my life. And it, there's a drastic difference. There's a drastic difference. I did have a friend who worked there and was fired June 2nd under the premise that the city bought it. And the city bought it and they were no longer allowed to have jobs because they were converting into apartments. They were told that they started that conversion right then. So they were, their services were no longer needed. This is June 2nd of last year is when they started this whole process. They had fired all the staff and started the conversion process. We'd seen people move in. Want to say pretty recently after that, I want to say nine months. People have said six months. I've seen people in and out of there constantly. And again, problems not with drug rehab and people, you know, getting on their feet. The problem is with selling drugs out of the hotel rooms with people coming onto the premises constantly in and out or hanging out at the gas stations all day, drugged out of their minds. Not coherent. We don't have that. If we have that, we look at it, it gets called in. That's not something that's happened in a while. Our wall got graffiti. I haven't seen graffiti since my, 10 years before my grandfather passed, which would have been like 20 years ago. I haven't seen graffiti in this neighborhood. There's graffiti on the wall. We had to take it off, you know, the whole deal. It's drastically gotten better. It's seen as a bad area and you want to put the, you know, kind of mingle it in. But it's gotten a lot better. We haven't seen graffiti. We haven't seen, you know, ODing, people dying on the streets, people getting a Narcan, just in the neighborhood street. Like they're, they're talking about guns. I'm not privy to all that. I'm trying to catch up. I have a young daughter. So we're, I'm trying to catch as much as I can. But this is just what I see. So my question, while the committee is, you know, looking at this to approve, it's not a hotel right now in any, any capacity. You can't rent a room. It's not called the Howard Johnson. It is, is an apartment complex. You can rent it by the month and you have to go through certain ways to rent it. It's $1,000. For $1,000 for a single room and a, you know, bathroom, I would expect that I wouldn't see someone ODing. I used to live on Q Street. I didn't see people ODing. Like we are seeing massive amounts of drug use. Obviously, Q Street has drug use as well, but I didn't see it where I was renting from. You're seeing it right outside here. So is this a hotel or a drug rehab or a sober living? Because that's a lot different to get in your backyard. It is a drug rehab that is not really, as far as I can tell, as a drug rehab, they're not really operating as drug rehab. They're for profit. People can come and go as they please. And they don't have to adhere to anything that I know about. You know, I don't know if they have their own stipulations or their own court orders that they have to do. But I don't think the facility themselves are looking after this kind of thing and rejecting it. So they had mentioned per capita, so the calls are down because they brought the population up. That population is not, for the most part, I'm not the person who calls the police for the most part. We let them handle what they, they need to handle. But these are all incidences the police need to be called. Calls are down because they brought the population up. That population isn't going to really call the police. I was part of that population. I was homeless for a little bit. I understand the whole idea, okay? So technically, the calls are up. And I worry for my mother who's in the area. She's a widow. There's a lot of older people in this area. The drugs, I have my nieces in the area. We can't have them on the street. We have to glock things up now. We have people driving up. We have people walking into our properties. So all for helping people. But there's a right way to do this. And if there's a, it is a drug rehab, that is a lot different from an apartment complex. I know that he pointed out the zoning. But we don't have the zoning yet. So hopefully you guys make the right decisions. Hopefully we get this on the right path to help people. I know it's a hard thing to figure out.
Good evening. My name is John Rodriguez. I was here at the first meeting. And the videos that we saw were nice, touching. Testimonials that we heard were nice. But I don't want anything more than any of you guys want. I want the same thing as everybody here. I'm no different. I want to get off work. I want to come home, put my feet up and relax. No worries. Not looking out the window, while the dog's barking. There's a cop car going down the street. They see where he stops or who he's going to take or what's this noise in the backyard? I want the same thing. Come home, R and R. Like the previous speaker said, we never got word of when it changed. We saw the construction going on. Then next, you know, the people driving in, unloading their cars, trucks. Then everything started happening. So, when was I informed, hey, we're gonna do this to the old Howard Johnson? I wasn't told. Wouldn't you want to be told if something's happening in your neighborhood? Hey, we're gonna turn this into this, this into that? I'm all for helping my neighbors, my fellow man. You know, I know sometimes we fall on hard times, we need a hand up, but there's a right way to do it and there's a wrong way to do it. With the people that are living there, you brought crime, vandalism, loitering, drugs, prostitution, and it just goes on and on. If you're gonna sit there and think for one minute that that's not going on, oh... We're not as smart as we think, because it is going on. Although it's not in plain sight, it ain't like a drive-through at Burger King where you just go in and order it, but it's there. Cars park, somebody gets the little nod, the little wink, they go down, they make the transaction. Two happy customers. The prostitution, it's the same thing. People walking up and down the street, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12. The police, they go by, they see the person walking, they don't stop and say, hey, you need a lift, where are you going, it's late? They're dressed in a certain way, come on, you know, we're all grownups here, we know what they look like. But yet, they, as long as they don't call me, I'm not stopping, the cops just keep going by. And when you do call, it's not a priority call. So like I said, I don't want anything more than what everybody else here wants. Peace and quiet in my neighborhood. And we're not getting it. So either you gotta go down the street banging a pot and pan together to get somebody's attention, what else are we gonna do? We're gonna leave it up to you guys to make the decision, hopefully it's the right one. Because sooner or later, it's coming to your guys' neighborhood. It's just not gonna stop at White Lane in Wybelle. It'll go to Rosedale, it'll go to Jenkins. It'll go everywhere. If we have a homeless shelter over here off of Brundage, why can't we put all those things together? You think a family wants to live in a two-unit apartment where the kids, what are they gonna run? Up and down the hallways, along the balcony? Actually, the mayor's here, if we can get the homeless shelter and buy a piece of land next to the homeless shelter, and build a little park, so the kids can run, and, you know, have a childhood, and not spend it in an apartment complex that once was a Howard Johnson. Little things like that. If we could all sit down and brainstorm something, we can come up with a lot better than this. This is something you just throw together at the last minute. Hey, look, we can convert this into that, or that into this. This isn't the first hotel that's been renovated, how about the one on Rio Road, that, next to the bowling alley? That's been under construction for a while, why didn't you guys do that to that? Wasn't the Red Lion vacant for a while too? There's hotels along Union Avenue, they're being renovated too, why don't we do that to that? So, like I said, I'm not a bad person, unless somebody else tells you they're lying. But we all want what's best for our fellow men. And you're gonna make 200 people happy, but you're gonna make 1,500 of my neighbors and me upset if you do this. Because like, you'll hear later on, we still have the crime, we still have the vandalism, we still have the graffiti, and you guys put it in our neighborhood. So if it isn't all centralized in one certain area where everybody could get a better grasp of it, you don't want one here, there, 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 you want to put it all together. Maybe you could have onsite law enforcement, like they do at the schools. Retired police officer can go, be there 24/7. The security that you guys are offering is only 10 hours a day. 10 hours, that's not even half a day. What happens to the other 14 hours? Ask yourself, hey, the guy's not here, he left already, let's do it. So, if we could all do that, like I said, the homeless shelter, we could buy land next to the Cotton Gins over there on Brundage Lane, put up some little units, build a park, put some toys on it, put some swings on it, let the children enjoy their childhood. And little things like that, you know, somebody comes up with something, somebody else has a better plan, let's hear it. But to convert that Howard Johnson into what you guys have done to it, you guys just brought more problems to me and my neighbors. So, I look forward to another meeting, because if we could postpone it for another year, I'll be back then too. Thank you very much.
Buenas noches.
Hi, good evening.
Mi nombre es Ricardo Morales.
For me to translate for him, is that okay? Yeah, okay, my name's Juliana Morales, Ricardo Morales.
Somos la pareja de la que están hablando del día de ayer que les tocaron el timbre y ya que les permitieron traer evidencias a ellos, si me pudieran permitir de poner el audio del video de lo que sucedió ayer para que se den cuenta de lo que estamos hablando.
Hi, we are the couple that they mentioned about the incident that happened yesterday. And we also have the video, and we wanted to know if we could put the video on, so you guys could hear it. It was the incident that happened, I'm the mother of the three kids. It just happened, and he works out of town. So it just happened yesterday, last night at 11.
Les voy a poner el video para que se den cuenta de lo que estamos preocupados.
And we're worried about it, and so if it's okay with you guys that we could play the video, so you guys could hear.
In front of you, there's actually that, there's a camera right there.
We can't answer the door right now, but if you'd like to leave a message, you can do it now.
Yeah, the cops are here, open up! Get off of this earth and land, now, you fucking fuckers! You're all dickfuckers! 100% of the boss! And you all can fucking die in Burger King! We need a break! All of you! Because my daddy is dead! And you all die! And you get the fuck off of my planet! And I fucking need it! Get the fuck off of my fucking planet! I want it! Hear me, up here, walk! Bruh! Get the fuck off my planet!
Okay, escucharon de lo que estamos un poco preocupados, no creo que no entiendan la situación. Yo trabajo fuera de mi casa.
We, this is a situation we deal with, and this is what we're going through, and that's why he wanted to know that you guys could hear it, so you guys could understand what we're going through. And he works out of town, he's not home.
Y esa es la preocupación que tenemos. Entonces yo, ¿cómo me voy a ir a trabajar? Si tengo mis hijos y mi esposa en mi casa.
Señor, una persona a la vez para que puedan escuchar todos.
If my husband's out, if my husband's out of town and I'm at home and my kids are there with my wife, how am I gonna feel? Over there worried.
Y esto empezó a suceder de hora que abrieron el hotel, antes no había pasado.
This is what started happening now that they opened that hotel, before it wouldn't happen, and this is starting happening now that they opened that.
Ahora les hago la última pregunta.
I would ask you the last question.
¿Qué pasa si yo me voy mañana a trabajar a mi trabajo?
If I go tomorrow to work at my job.
Y cuando estoy trabajando me dan la mala noticia que algo pasó en mi casa.
If they call me and give me the bad notice that something happened at home.
Y dentro de la investigación dan con el responsable en el hotel.
And what happens if they investigate and the responsible person is living there at the hotel?
Porque para eso es esta conferencia.
Because that's why we're meeting here.
Para hacerles saber lo que está sucediendo.
So we could let you guys know what's going on, and what we are living in.
Y se los hacemos saber.
And so you guys are aware of what we're...
So en sus manos está lo que quieran aprobar o no aprobar.
If you guys want to prove it, or not approve it.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aurora Montes. I'm the own site manager from the Potrero Apartments, right next to the Howard Johnson Hotel, or what it was, the Howard Johnson Hotel. My husband was shot because there was a couple that was breaking into a lot of the cars in our parking lot. There were about 12 cars that were breaking in. And when my husband tried to go and see who he was, the guy just shot him. And there was a female with him. She took off on the car and he took off running on foot. My kids are horrified, they don't want to leave there, but we have no choice. Our tenants there are very working families, they work, they don't have jobs that they can support their family somewhere else besides those apartments. So, it is hard for them to pay the rent, and then have to pay their windows, or replace whatever, the people that just come in there and just break in. Because they don't, we don't know who that is. But they usually go to the hotel, that's where they run. We don't know if they live there or not, but I'm pretty sure some of them do. Recently, about two weeks ago, we have some homeless people that usually go into the hotel to visit somebody that lives there. And they were in our pool, in the complex pool, they were getting high, and they break the fence so they can get out. So, they usually go in there, the people that live there in the hotel, they usually go in there at midnight looking for the trash bins to see what they get, but they also looking at the cars, try to see which one is unlocked, and see if they can get something out of it. So I don't feel safe there anymore, I've been there 10 years, never had this type of problems before. It's okay, I'm okay with them to be, you know, get out of whatever they are, to be helped, it's okay. I like to help people too. But that doesn't mean that they're gonna come and they're gonna affect, there's 56 families that get affected in the apartment complex. So I don't think it's fair for them to work hard and then have to replace their things that they were stolen. And plus, they don't feel safe anymore. I hope that you guys can make a good choice, not just for us, but for everybody in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Brenda Garcia. The beautiful pictures that we see up here, that's not what we see in our neighborhood. The people getting help like everybody's talking about, that's really great. That's not what we're seeing, we're seeing the mental illness, we're seeing the drug abuse. So I think somebody said, is it a drug rehab? Or are we trying to transition people into, like this young lady said, the wonderful things they did for her? Two of them, right? Here? So what do we have there? The screaming and yelling that you heard on that, our windows have been broken, we replaced them. You said about calling law enforcement?
Ma'am.
They send you a number.
Can you scoot up to the microphone so they can hear you?
And, oh, these guys? They send you a number, they, oh, right here, they send you a number and a link, and then you go ahead and say what's happened to you. My mom's house was broken into at 3615 Mesa Grande, right across the street, the lady had got off work, it was 5 o'clock in the morning, she said, there's a truck pulled up at your mom's house and they're taking furniture out. My mom was out of town. By the time somebody got there, they were already gone in a white truck. One of the other homeless was yelling that they had went down to the facility, down at the end, I guess that we're talking about. Anyway, screaming, yelling, breaking windows, we've been broken into, we're replacing windows. There's, they're pooping in the front, we got the kids, was it Planza Mesa Grande, there's a bus stop there. They do drugs right there, somebody said about the prostitution, have to see that, the cars pull up, you know what's going on. So the beautiful families that we've seen, and the help that they're getting, that's great. But the ones with the mental illness, the drug abuse, that's what we're talking about, that we have upfront to see every day. That we want, we want change. We want, what this man say, he wants to be able to come home, and we want to feel safe. The other family, they're at work, the husband's at work, and, you know, we're at home, our husbands work out of town. So I think like, you have wives, you know, and you have them pounding at your door, breaking windows, and your wife has you on the phone, the kids are screaming, she's scared, like, maybe you're at a business meeting, you know, and you can't get to her, and you're like, call 911, how long's it gonna take to get there? I mean, they could be hurt, and there ain't nothing you could do about it. She's screaming, telling you, I need help, I need help, you know, come home, help me, and there's nobody there. Your wife's already beat up, raped, whatever's going on by this person that is not in its right mind. It's mine left it because the drugs ate it all up. And that's where we're at, I mean, I don't know what else to say, that's what we're dealing with. And that's what everybody's afraid of. It's not the people that have, that can't be rehabilitated, that, these pretty little pictures you seeing, we don't see none of that. That's not what we're seeing, we're seeing trash, big baskets of trash. The lady said this apartment person, complex, all on the side, that was all full of trash until month before last. They came in and started cleaning up all that mess. When my windows in my truck got broken into, I chased the person down to, there's a storage unit, and on the side there was tents, all right there, I went in, I told the girls, hey, you know, these homeless people are coming and they're breaking our windows and getting turned, she goes, oh, well, they're friends to the ones that are living in the, that Howard Johnson right there. And I said, why don't you call the cops? She said, we did, they're saying call code enforcement, or there was this other number for cleanup. So that's what we're dealing with until just recently, when all these meetings started, that's when all the cleanup came. And everything looks all pretty now, cleaned up around there, well, I wouldn't say pretty, but it's cleaned up, it was really bad. So anyways, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew Estrada. I am a resident in the neighborhood around where this is affecting everybody else at. And the audio recording you heard, the video, that is exactly what you see all hours of day, hours of night, going through our neighborhood. Don't want my kids outside to play, not safe. You heard about the guy that broke, tried to break in a guy's house with AR-15, he's my neighbor across the street. I mean, what are we gonna do? I used to stop at the Shell gas station, which in the picture is just, on the corner right there. You stop, get my morning drink, if I go to work, I gotta be at work at 6:00. You got five or six people out there asking for money, begging, change. And until all this started going on, that was never like that there, especially at the Shell gas station, let alone in our neighborhoods. So it's something that, like everybody said, the videos are all great, but that's not what we're seeing in our neighborhood. That's not what we have over there going on. We have the total opposite of that. I just wanted that to be on the record.
They wanted me to play this video for you guys, this is a shooting at one of the apartments, correct? Yeah. Also, on the way over here, I just passed going on the 99 when I came over to here, and there was a lady out there with no pants on, just, and mental illness, definitely, but she's in the middle of the parking lot, no one was helping her at all.
Your name again, sir?
Christopher DeBont. And here, can I... Can you see that? There you go. I don't know if you guys could hear that or anything. I don't know if you guys could hear that or anything. Oh, there's the shot. So was everybody able to take that in? Okay. Was that the neighbor, the location of that? Was that next to the? Is that the apartments right next door? Trying to make sure that we get the location down. Thank you.
Juliana Morales, I'm just gonna play the video for you guys to see.
Does any commissioner have any comments or, I mean, any questions? No comments, sorry. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on the side? And remember, this is not a time to express any opinions on the matter. It is only a time to ask questions, I'm sure. I see, Ms. Commissioner Neal.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to be here, to everybody. I do have questions. Most of my questions, and there are many, are for the owner, Mr. Daniels Sade. Could you please come back to the mic? Thank you. I see you have company tonight. Is that an owner as well?
I'm sorry?
You have company tonight. Is the other person with you an owner as well?
No.
Okay, all right. Can you tell us about the ownership of this property?
As, I don't understand.
You are the owner or are you an owner?
No, I'm an owner. We are three partners.
Okay, so can you tell us about the ownership of the property?
The part, this property is held in an LLC. Every building is held in an LLC. It's very standard for every real estate transaction. We do have a, in this property, actually, we have another investor that is also an owner. And the, us three, we also own Blue Ocean Equities.
Got it, okay. Does Blue Ocean Equities also own the Rio or is that a different partnership arrangement?
It's a different arrangement. They do not, Blue Ocean Equities does not own the Blanco or the Rio.
Okay, so what's the connection between the Rio and the Blanco?
Us three owners are in both.
Okay.
In both LLCs.
Got it, all right. So you have some experience with this, what you're showing us. I'm gonna ask you a couple of really straight, direct questions. And it may seem harsh, but it is meant for the benefit of everybody. The meeting two weeks ago, I wasn't here because I was not scheduled to be here. But you didn't show up to that meeting, nor did any of your partners. Can you tell us why you didn't come to the meeting?
Personally, I didn't even know about the meeting. But in previous transactions that we did, it was just a transactional, meaning that the engineers were handling, so we didn't even feel that it's something, that is, it just blew out of proportion and then I flew over in order to be here.
I knew you would say that and I can't give any comments, but I'll address that later, but you're not alone with that. All right, well, I'm gonna ask you another very direct question. Why is it that this hotel ownership decided, and can you tell us a story about it? To convert this from a hotel use to a multifamily dwelling? Renovate, install kitchens, et cetera, without the proper land use in place? What was the thinking in terms of the timeline?
Well, we thought that we do have the things in place. We pulled all the correct permits. And we are still going through the process. We're not fully done. The idea of transitioning it from a hotel to a multifamily dwelling is because our vision is to give people a more permanent place to be in, to improve their quality of life, to be able to elevate from where they are to what they can be. So that is where our vision is and that's where we're going for.
And that's, I was just gonna ask you, you know, why did you choose the name The Blanco? And when you brought the property back in, I think, early 2022, what the vision was for the area. Are, you're not from here. You said you flew in?
Well, I was out of town in a.
Oh, got it. Okay, so you're quite familiar with the area and the history of that area?
To a degree.
To a degree, okay. One of the things that the neighbors are saying is that your now use, your ownership is changing the character of the neighborhood. What do you have to say about that?
Per the professional people that I talk to, it's not exactly the case. The way that it's presented, it gives the image of there were no problems in that area. Everything was perfect. Suddenly this comes in and all this thing is going on. The reports that I'm getting and we're getting daily reports, we are on this, we are taking it seriously. This is not a light matter. The reports that we're getting is that, and by the way, the the security that we are using is working very tightly with the police. I've been in a very tight communication with the police in order to find out and see how we can improve and see what we can do. Most of the crime in the area has nothing to do with the building. To give you an example, even the shooter that just happened a few days ago? He's not a resident of the place. He shot somebody on the freeway, came in through a Caltrans fence that I cannot do anything about. And I've been dealing with Caltrans, asking them to fix it. They said that they will fix it, because, sorry, I'll backtrack. Somebody crashed a car into that fence and knocked it down. They said that they will fix it. I talked to them again. They said, oh, the ticket was closed, meaning it was already done. Said, nothing has been fixed. So they reopened the ticket. We're waiting for them to handle this. I cannot do much about it. The person walked in through that fence. If there was a proper sound wall or a proper, you know, wrought iron fence or something that Caltrans would have done there to preserve the area, he wouldn't have been able to get through. So we are suffering just as much as everybody else from influences that are going on there. I can tell you that we're working very diligently in regards to if there is somebody that is doing something that is illegal, somebody that is violent, somebody that endangers the safety of others, they're out. We do not keep people like that on the property. So it's not that nobody comes in that does it. I don't know anybody that can hermetically keep everybody out. But when we do find out, we handle this immediately and we have things in place and we're working with people. And you can ask the people that actually are doing it on a day-to-day basis that that is being done.
Can you put up temporary fencing where the opening is? Is there an issue with putting up maybe temporary fence posts?
There is an issue that it's not our property and I'm not allowed to really touch it. I can do it if laws were not in place, but.
On your side of the property, where the opening is, can you create?
No, because it's putting up against this and there is no real room to do it, if I remember correctly. We were looking at even doing some other things and we couldn't, but we are, we are working with them and they said that they are taking it seriously and that they will fix it. So hopefully it's gonna be done very shortly.
So what is Clemmer and, is it Clemmer and Company?
Yes.
What is Clemmer and Company's role with regard to the Blanco?
They're the managers.
Oh, how long have they been the managers?
I wanna say a year and a half.
Since you purchased the property?
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 on this one, yes, sorry. You're right. Yes, from the beginning.
All right, and you've always had an onsite manager? Is that a new thing?
Always had an onsite manager, always somebody there, always open, yeah.
Some of the neighbors mentioned that your 10 hours of security isn't enough. Do you have a plan to increase security?
As much as I would love to do that, I, as it is, it is not sustainable to even keep the 10. This is not a part of a business plan to keep a 10-hour security, private security onsite for things. We had them there as a temporary measure to get things going until things settle down and then we can transition and reduce it because there is just no room with what is happening to also afford that, to increase it to a 24 hours. I'm not the city. I don't have the pockets of the city.
So what do you think it's gonna take to get things to settle? Because one of your former residents of the Rio said that things were shaky when she first got there, but then things changed. And it sounds like that, tell us about that. Is it something similar happening here where things are shaky and it's gonna change? Because it sounds like you're saying that what's happening in the neighborhood is not your use, it's everything around you. But someone from your other development said things were shaky and they got better. So I'm just trying to understand what you feel like is inside your control and what you can do and what's outside of your control.
Commissioner, we need to pause.
Yeah, can we take a break? Cause Commissioner Coleman left and so we have the hearing going, so we have to wait until he gets back.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Can we pause and just take a recess then?
Yes, we can.
10 minutes?
Yes.
7:23?
Sorry.
I apologize. All right, we are going to begin. Again, resume. When we paused, Commissioner Neal was in the middle of a question. We are going to allow her to resume her question.
Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, so the question just before we took a recess was to Daniel Sade, one of the owners of 2700 White Lane LLC, The Blanco. The question was, one of your residents of the Rio said when she first got there, things were getting, things were shaky and then things changed. And one of the, few of the comments that you've already made tonight suggests that you think it's the outside area. That's the problem and not necessarily your use or your residence. And my question to you about that, you know, was, you're trying to get things kind of under control in a sense. You know, I'm trying to understand what you feel like is within your power and what you feel like is outside of your control in terms of what needs to happen to get a better rain on the situation in that area.
Correct. It's not that I don't think that there are no issues in the properties. It's just that my comment was, the way it was presented to the commission, that before that, there was nothing. Now there is everything. And I don't think that this is the case. My point is, things have happened before and things are happening now. We suffer from that as well. In regards to your question of what that person said? The way that I view it is as people come in, we will have some bad apples. Then we vet it out and we clean it up. In addition to that, that was the original first project. It took some learning curve, it took some getting, understanding of what is against what, who's against who, and putting procedures in place in order to minimize the situation. I can tell you that today, in The Blanco, it's a much better and an improvement on what we were when we started at the Rio. And people that I know that are working at The Blanco do not feel threatened. And I will never try to subject someone to an area that I don't feel that is safe, that I don't think that I would feel comfortable to be in. And on that, I mean, it's better to maybe ask the people that are working there, there is two people that are working there, and see for yourself if they feel threatened from the people that are there or not. So I hope that that answers the question.
That's enough from that question. That's fine. You mentioned policies and procedures. And I'm looking at the rules, the resident, the rules for your residents, rules and regulations. And there's some really interesting things on here. Like a $5 fee for overnight residents paid before the stay. What does that mean?
It's more to minimize situations. So we need to work within the legal system of what we can do and what we can't do. So this is just more of something to put something in place that we want to know who's coming in, what's going on. So it's not just gonna be somebody is there and bringing whoever they want whenever they want.
So is that a parking fee or is that a, because that seems like an Airbnb additional guest fee.
I see.
And you're not a hotel, so I'm just trying to understand.
I think that the better person to answer that might be Tasha. In regards to this.
So in reading these, I did not make these. We were just given these by one of the workers with Clemmer and Company to send out to our residents, just to have a little bit of accountability for them. We do have a rule in their actual lease that states, you know, with their guests and everything like that. We have a lot of issues with guests overstaying their welcome. So instead of serving like a three-day notice for subletting or adding somebody to your lease that is not on there, we want them to come and check in with us. I guess this could have been worded differently, $5 fee if not provided prior. So I actually see where that does read a little bit odd, like we're charging for them to stay. But we have actually not implemented any of those for guests that have come and checked in.
So you said you got those rules and regulations from Clemmer and Company?
Yes, that's who I work for. I work for the main office.
Okay.
Yes.
I was just gonna ask you. Okay, so you work for the main, but are you, so you're the onsite manager though?
I'm the property supervisor of the onsite manager. So we actually, we trained a new gal. She started a few months ago. She was unable to be here tonight, but she is the one that's there 8 to 5 and I go back and forth between the properties. So we've kind of just tried to tighten up again with rules and regulations, but I do see how that one reads a little bit oddly. But we do follow like the same lease and procedures through CAR, through the Association of Realtors.
Did you guys get a permit to install the kitchens? Did you need one for that?
You know what, Daniel, do you have an answer for the kitchen? I'm so sorry, I don't have an answer for the permitting.
We don't have the kitchens installed yet.
Okay, got it. See, that's good. That's good. That's a good fact to share.
I knew that answer, but not the permit.
Okay, and. Okay, and give me a second, I'm going to look through my notes, I have so many. Who are the residents? Tell me about your, you talked a little bit about the vision for the property. You want to help people, there's, I mean, we have a housing crisis, there's so many people to help right now. Who are the people that are the intended resident or the target residents for the Blanco?
Well, by law, I'm not allowed to discriminate. So there is no target people. We help whoever comes in and approaches us and they approach us in many different avenues.
So how do you help people as a landlord by putting together this type of property, right? Without the ability to help people? How do you know that you're, how do you, tell me what the benchmark is? How do you know that you're being effective at helping people with this development?
I know that I'm helping from feedback from the people that are there. For example, people that come in and they haven't held a job for years and they go, they work with us and then they suddenly, they do, they are able to get a job. We help them find jobs. We have programs, we pay from our own pocket for social work. This is not a landlord job, but we are doing that. We have centers that we created from our own money in order to help residents and the people there with, we do with them holidays, we do craft and work with the kids, we do, I'm sorry, I don't have all my train of thought. There is so many things that are being done there on these levels. We do pantry work with them. This is all stuff that we pay for, this is not landlord-y.
Got it.
It's not my job.
So once you, say, commission and council eventually approves some sort of request on this property for the use that you want, do you plan on then applying for something to target a specific population for tenancy in the building? I'm just trying to understand what the, Mr. Johnson, you described in your staff report earlier certain types of housing.
Assisted housing.
Assisted housing and supportive housing.
Supportive houses.
And is that, is that the overall goal for the project is to become supportive housing?
Well, I think we already are supportive housing, but we don't put labels on this and we don't, we don't work in order to get government funding for these things. My, the original concept of the whole thing is how can the private sector come in and take responsibility for the community? Because government cannot do it on its own. And it's to work in collaboration with the government in order to do something better for the community. And to be honest, I think that we are getting there. Are there things to improve? 100%. Will there be things to improve five years from now? 100%. But we are working on improving, we want to do better and we, I think we are improving and we are doing better and the feedback that I'm getting from officials and people that I'm working with and, and people that we talk to and have meetings is very good feedback.
You chose to pursue a zone change, a zoning change and general plan amendment as the route to get the proper permission to use the property how you're currently using it. And my question is.
May I interrupt? It's not exactly true.
Okay, explain.
I can use the property right now the way that I'm doing it, I don't need anybody's approval for that.
Okay, explain that.
Okay, it's, it's, if I have the residents as they are right now, I cannot do maybe background checks and I cannot do, I don't know all the legal stuff for it, the management company that we hired, they know how to do this. But when you get a resident in, it's a different matter than you coming into a hotel, hotel, you go in, you can, they cannot check up on you. You pay, you're done. So I can.
I'm sorry, excuse me, did you pay? Because in the report it says that you hadn't paid for.
I'll explain.
Okay.
We were told that since people are staying there for 30 days and more, we don't need to pay. It's called, there is a term for that, I think, and non-transitional, non-transient hotel or something like that, non-transient hotel. So under that label, we can operate the way that we are operating and everything is dandy by the law. The, what we want to do, as I said before, is we want to give the people a more permanent place. We want them to feel better, we want them to feel pride in what it is that they're achieving and what they're doing. That they, the place that they can call, okay, this is my house, this is my apartment. They cannot do that when it says hotel. So it's a different concept of what it is. We are going through an expense to do this and obviously going through a lot of aggravation in order to do that. But really, we don't have to do that.
So why this particular route? Staff report shared other routes to the zoning that you're, to getting the city's approval for a particular type of use that you're seeking on the property. And you pursued the general plan amendment and zone change, but there's also the PUD and the conditional use permit. Is there any reason why? Because I'm sure you guys have people advising, I know Swanson engineered. Is there any particular reason why you sought the general plan amendment and zone change versus the PUD or the conditional use permit?
I can't say that there is, I just think it is more a permanent situation and a correct thing for them. I don't have a specific answer, there are so many ways of skinning the cat. It's just a route that.
Are you open to maybe skinning the cat a different way? If it makes sense in terms of your project moving forward?
If it makes sense, by all means. If it doesn't, I can just keep it as it is and be done with it and not spend any more money.
I'm just asking the question because there's so many different ways to do what you're trying to do. And I wanted to know if there was a particular motivation behind the way that you did it.
I think that will be the best for the residents.
Okay, I see. I'm going to go ahead and yield to my other commissioners. I hope I asked some of the questions you guys had.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Justin Swanson, one other thing, I'd like to ask Paul Johnson to kind of go over this with the housing crisis in California as far as how the zone change helps the city versus maybe a CUP or going a different route? Because I believe there are some benefits to the city if the zone change goes through and gives more multifamily housing to the city of Bakersfield. So, Paul?
Commissioner Neal through the chair. So one of the reasons for going, I'm assuming one of the reasons for going through a general plan amendment and zone change versus a conditional use permit is that the Rio Marata site went through a general plan amendment, zone change back in May 2022. So being under the same operator, it's the same scenario. And I would assume that they would think that there wouldn't be some of the challenges that we see here. And that is correct, more, more residential dense property that we have, and this comes in at 60 units, an acre, 60 dwelling units an acre. That does help us in the eyes of the state, but as does a conditional use permit, we can reflect that also in our reporting to the state.
I'm going to follow up on that because I have a follow-up question for you. We keep talking about the Rio and the problem is we haven't, we don't know much about the Rio. So is the Rio similarly kind of situated around other apartments in a C2 zone with gas stations and fast food nearby and a whole neighborhood, old neighborhood that's been there? I mean, where is the Rio? And because if we're, I'm not, I can't get into the because yet, but where is it? I mean, is it similar situated?
It is on the north end of Buck Owens Boulevard. And there are, there is gas stations there, there's a restaurant, I believe, that is vacant though. There's some businesses, warehouse businesses, there is a mobile home park not far away, but it is on Buck Owens Boulevard, northern end.
Does the mobile home park have a street like with houses like right next door like this one does? It's just like.
This, no, the hotel on Rio Marata is not adjacent to the mobile home park, no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
Commissioner Neal, I asked a few of the questions that I wanted to ask, but I do have several questions remaining. I was a little confused too because there was a lot said about the Rio and now that they clarified which one was the Rio. I do remember us having very similar discussions about the Rio two years ago. And that was a conversion of a motel, but I, I see that as a significantly different site. And I'll get away from pining and get back to my question. Now that I know who the Rio is, I can move on to, what other community outreach have you done in this neighborhood? I mean, it looked, it sounds like you reluctantly had a meeting with them last week. Has there been any other outreach to the community when you came into town, come into that particular property?
I wouldn't categorize this reluctantly at all. Just we weren't aware that there was an issue until that was, that last meeting. Before that, there was no, we didn't go in and knock on doors to tell people, hey, we're here. We didn't expect that. We, we haven't experienced that in other areas. So it was something that blindsided us.
So getting back to the type of business you are, because I'm getting, I'm confused because you talk about it being multifamily dwellings, but then you talk about some of these community services that you offer, but you don't classify it as a, what was the term, sustainable? What was the term that you're using, Mr. Johnson, for the state applies? Yeah, supportive housing or?
Yes, transitional housing and supportive housing.
Yeah, so you don't classify it as that, you keep referring to it as multifamily. So what is it? What, you, Rio seems to be some kind of a rehab center of some kind, but you seem to be vague about that. What's, what's really going on there?
One, I don't think that I'm vague at all. Two, it is not a rehab place. There are about 300 people in the Rio, just a second. 200, no, there are units, but how many people? Okay, close to 400 people in that facility and.
In which facility?
In the Rio.
Okay.
And I don't think that it's fair to classify them as mental ill or drag addicts. It is not true. Is there a certain percentage? Yes, is there a certain percentage of that in your neighborhood? I guarantee you, maybe it's lower than there, but that is a challenge that we're dealing with and we're working with, but to classify it as a rehab facility is an unfair classification.
So these leases you have, I'm kind of hung up on this issue that they have to move out in a year. So what's the process? I mean, how did they get referred to you in the first place?
Okay, again, it's an incorrect premise. There is no thing that they have to move out in a year. I don't know where you got that from.
It got from your video.
No, that they did not say that.
The people were saying it.
They didn't say that they have to. There is, the government programs supporting them for a year. Okay, then, and then again, it is some of them, it is a percentage of them. It's not everybody that is there. The, there are people that are there more than a year. And if you allow me just a second, how many, tell me somebody that is longer than a year.
Let's a lease, so we do six months. My name is Kristi Anne Prokeski, by the way, I'm the property manager of the Rio.
Can you say your last name one more time?
Prokeski. So we do six-month and one-year leases. And then, so then their lease, when that lease is up, they can renew that lease or they can move on to other properties that we have. And also we have programs, some have, some people have open door programs or Section 8 that help them with their rent. So when that program's over, hopefully by the end of that 12-month program, they have a job, they've moved on, you know, they became, so people that pay taxes and, you know, that kind of thing. So it's just, some are transitional, but it's permanent housing, they don't have to leave. It's not a rehab, it's not a mental health place, but we do have some of those tenants there and we get them the resources needed.
So again, who's referring these people to? Are they just showing up, knocking on the door, say, hey, can I rent a place here?
Yes, some do show up, sometimes a worker will come by from open door, Section 8 flood and say, hey, I have a few homeless people here, do you guys have any vacancies? We show them a unit and then they either sign a lease or go on to a different place.
So do you consider yourself transitional housing or do you consider yourself just apartments for rent?
Apartments for rent. We'd like them to stay as long as they possibly can.
So this is a question for Daniel, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get your last name when I wrote, I didn't write your last name down, so I apologize for not addressing you.
That's totally okay, Daniel, it's totally fine, my last name is Sadeh.
I'm sorry?
Sadeh, S-A-D-E-H.
All right. So my last question is a little bit more friendly than the last couple of questions. The, the last question is, what can the city do to resolve some of these issues that you have at the Blanco and to help make this a success besides doing the zone thing?
Okay, that is a friendly question and I really appreciate that. I think a little more policing, allocating a little more resources, even just drive-bys, more drive-bys, more, just more presence and more help with social workers. If, I feel that, because the social workers in the city are overworked as it is and overtasked and then they see that we are handling things, so it's like, okay, there is a problem here, somebody's taking care of things here, so we don't get as much help as we should and as we can. So if we could have a little more social workers present, I don't mind to facilitate and designate an office for them, a location for them in the property so they have a place to come as a permanent place that they can work from, et cetera. And these are the two main things that I think will make tremendous, tremendous changes.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
My Chair Gator?
Thank you, I'm recollecting my list as, thank you Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner Neal. Many of my questions were answered or spurred new questions. So I'm going to start with questions for staff, they do have a few. One, during the presentation, it was listed that a walk of the property was conducted with various city agencies to inspect various code issues. I was wondering if Mr. Johnson or city staff would provide a brief summary of what was found as far as the, the presence of violations or the lack of violations, the general operating procedures relative to other properties of a similar offering that they would encounter?
The intent of the site visits was not to look for violations. The intent of the site visit was to be, I don't want to say unannounced, but rather to just show up onsite and get a feel for how the site is operating without, you know, knowing the staff was coming. Plus, we heard, we heard the comments from the. staff was coming. Plus, we heard, we heard the comments from the community, so we needed to investigate that at all hours. Overall, when we, when one of our planning staff went out with code enforcement, they saw the site was in good shape. A couple of the, once we did receive a copy of the rules and regulations, obviously, then we noticed, okay, there were some things hanging from the railing, and there were some other things that could be in violation of the rules and regulations. But our intent was not to go into a room and look for violations or anything. Overall, the fences down on the Caltrans side, that could be a problem. The lighting on the roofs was on, and it lit up the parking area, which could be good or bad, because there could be some, what we call, light pollution going off-site, the way they were. They may need to be adjusted somewhat, but overall, the site was presentable.
Thank you. And then, second was a clarification for the applicant. It was, it was mentioned in answering a previous commissioner's question that the kitchens were not currently operational or installed. Could you clarify the status of, I mean, I'm trying to not say thoughts, but just the current operation versus the proposed operation? Could you just clarify, are there, is the kitchen sink part of what's currently offered to the current residents of the Blanco?
They do have a sink in the room. There are community kitchens that they can use.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That, can I ask, I guess this would be maybe a building department question? To be classified as an occupiable, habitable rental, I might be mis, but is a separate sink for kitchen versus a separate sink for bathing facility, is that a requirement in the state of California? Separate facilities for cleaning, for kitchen sink versus a bathroom sink, is that a requirement in California?
That one's a stumper for me right now.
Oh, sorry. I defer to Mr. Johnson. If he, you move towards the microphone. I don't know if you're...
I was just going to say, I mean, if our building official can't answer that, that's something we would have to get back with you on. I understand your question, though, yes.
Okay. I just, yeah, yes, if you...
From...
You said kitchen sink versus bathroom sink.
Yes, and I don't know if maybe Clemmer and Company, as property managers, kind of minimum, minimum tenant offerings in rentals, facilities for kitchens versus baths to be classified as a living space versus a transient space?
Per our research and talking to code enforcement, as long as the sink is outside of the bathroom area, there is no need for an additional sink in the bathroom area.
It can serve both uses?
Yes.
Okay. I noticed, and I know the floor plan was provided at the previous hearing, so, I saw that. Thank you. You had mentioned, and then one last question for the applicant. You had mentioned, when describing your process for selecting residents to live at the facility, that should you receive the R4 zoning, you could be more selective? Do you, what, what aspect of your, of your process do you see changing if this property is owned R4 versus a transient, or a non-transient hotel occupancy?
I don't know all the new laws that came into place, because there is a new Attorney General that came in a few years ago and changed everything about landlording, and I don't have all the exact nuances of everything that changed, but that is something that Clemmer and Company is professional at, and I know that we had discussions on it being done, and they specifically told us that within their limitations, once it is permitted that way, they can be a little more discretionary.
Because during one of the questions, it was mentioned that background checks are not currently, are not something that can be done in a transient occupancy, but are something that could be initiated should this be an R4? Is that, is that an example of, of a process that would maybe be modified should the zoning go through?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Good. And I don't know if Clemmer and Company, I think, these are, is there a representative from Clemmer and Company?
There is, but I don't think that...
I don't know if that's a...
Please, you gotta... Yeah, you gotta identify yourself. Thank you.
Our 70 YouTube followers would not be able to hear your part of that, yeah.
All right, I'll come on up. So, yes, we actually do have a screening report in our app and in our system. It does your, we have, we run it across the board for all of our properties, over 2,000 in Kern County. So it has your basic screening report, credit, which we necessarily, if they have a voucher, do not need to run, but we do a full background check per the standards in California for misdemeanors, what have you. We cannot go back any less. I believe it is exactly like right at two years, so if it's over that, we can ask for a reasoning and anything they've done to kind of remedy that situation. So if it may have been drug-related theft, arson, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of a few that are out there that we've seen, or any classes that they've taken to remedy that say, say they did maybe have a drug issue, maybe they were arrested eight years ago. Well, what are you doing to better yourself? What classes have you taken? Because I know a lot of people were touching on that it's a drug rehab. It is not, but we cannot discriminate if that is something that they have on their background.
Thank you. And that, and that process is currently in place and will continue to be in place, or is, will be in place?
It is currently in place. We do that with all of our properties, anywhere that we run a lease.
Thank you. And then, one other question. Mr. Johnson, I think, is there a representative from BPD in the audience today?
Although we have fine officers in the back, there's no representative that is available to speak on this.
Fantastic. Well, then, Mr. Johnson, are you able to speak on the top 10 list? I think that was a, kind of a buzzy word that was mentioned.
I was briefed by one of the assistant police chiefs. Yes, what would you like? You have a specific question?
I guess my question is, once a property is observed as being a chronic nuisance for various reasons, does that, what, as a, as a nearby neighbor, as a resident of a community where our community, properties are located, what, what impact does that have on frequency of, on service and heightened awareness of, of an issue?
I will let Assistant City Attorney speak on that. My, my conversations with Assistant Police Chief were more involved around the service calls.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Kater? So, BPD currently has a top 10 locations of basically where they receive the most calls for service, and so that's how they identify the top 10 locations. And what they informed us is that currently, this location, El Blanco, is not on the list, but when they were on the list, or when you do have locations on the list, what they typically do is that they do various things. Sometimes it's enforcement, so it's more of a being, going out there and being proactive. Other times, it's more of crime prevention through environmental design, and other times, it's just being highly visible with the patrols, and, and also, community outreach in the area. So it just depends on the circumstances, and once they identify or notice that there's a drop in the calls for service, then that location gets removed from the top 10. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
I think it did, yeah. I think those are my questions for now, so I will defer to other commissioners.
Commissioner Biddle?
My question's for staff. Luckily, my commissioners asked 95% of my questions, so I get to be short and sweet. How many other hotel conversions for this type of property are done under a general plan amendment, or have been done under a general plan amendment?
Yes, thank you for that question. So, there has been one hotel conversion done under general plan amendment zone change, and that was the one we spoke of earlier, the Rio Marada. But there have been several hotel conversions done through a conditional use permit, three of them. And actually, Rio Marada did get a conditional use permit in 2019, but that lapsed, so it expired, and they came back with a general plan amendment zone change. And then, we also have hotel conversions to assisted living through a conditional use permit.
So, do you have a number then on how many of them are done with the conditional use permit within Bakersfield, or is there many in the works?
That would be two hotel conversions, two apartments with a conditional use permit, and two hotel conversions to assisted living, which is similar to an apartment with conditional use permit. So four, and then one through a general plan amendment zone change.
And then I have one question for the applicant. Do you, sorry, I'll wait for you. Do you have a business plan or a business model for either of your operations that you have?
Of course we do, yes.
And did you, by chance, did you, did that get turned? And I saw the, the list of rules and stuff, but you do have kind of an idea of what this is going to be in the future as far as transitional housing? I mean, are, is it just going to be housing vouchers? Is it going to be people that are going to live there permanently? I mean, as I said, I'm a little bit confused on, are we supposed to grow with you as you come up with what this is going to be in the future?
Well, the purpose is to have people be there permanently, and we are striving for that as it is right now. And we do have people that have been with us pretty much from the start.
And then you said you were working with organizations like FLOOD and the Open Door Network.
And Veteran Affairs, yeah.
Oh, very nice. And so they've been, they bring you individuals, or how does that work? Do you offer them up your, your rooms that you have available, or do they approach you when they have been individuals that need housing?
They approach us when they have people in...
They approach you. Okay, that was all I had. Thank you so much for your time.
Does any commissioner have any other questions for the public on this item? If not, our screens got switched, so I keep having to look at Kater's screen to see if anyone's requested to speak. I don't know what happened. Is there, yeah, IT. Just kidding. We love you, IT, wherever you are. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal at this time? If so, please prepare, be prepared to step to the podium. Identify yourself once more. Each side will only have five minutes total, so make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of the previous speaker to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comment has a chance to do so. So first, we will start with those in favor. You have five minutes if you'd like to speak again about, or to address any of the concern, nothing. Seeing none, we'll move on to those opposed rebuttal. Anyone have anything to say? Yeah, please come step forward and identify yourself and go ahead and ask away.
Okay, just two quick questions. More for...
Can you identify yourself one more time, please?
Deanna Devant, Deanna Devant, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There's, actually, you can't ask questions at this point. It's just your rebuttal as to what he said, so you can just...
For him?
Yeah, but you can address it to the question.
Okay. Well, I, my question is, is, can I show the picture or no? I've got a picture right here that is in multiple different, in Trilo. I'm not sure where this is, but it shows actually the kitchens, and it advertises it. It gives the amount, which, you know, it's $1,036. And my other question is, because it looks like there's a kitchen in there. I'm sorry, it does. And then also, my, there was one thing that was said. When you go look up the license, see, I can't see with my bifocals, it's license number 23-0017-4938, and it says rental leasing is commercial, but Mr. Justin Swanson said something, it was that they have a non-transit hotel to be able to operate the way they're operating. I'm a little bit confused. Is this just like a little go-around in order for them to operate the, the way they were operating? And if this is a picture of not of a, of a kitchen at, are they going to move everybody out and build the kitchens and then move them back in? And if so, where are they going to move those people? That's, and then the other thing was, is that business plan would be nice. When you go onto Blue Ocean Equity, there is Bakersfield La Marada, there's Bakersfield, the, the Blanco, I guess it is now, which the picture's originally from when, what do you call it, Hodel, or Holiday Inn was opened. And I do have a picture just from 2019, I mean, July 29th, that we went by. Okay, so right here, this is when you guys were showing, and I didn't know when I was going around the corner that I took exactly the same shot, but you could see that the grass is green. There we go. The grass is green. This right here, it's not. And they said that they're going to redo that, not a problem. But we've got a shopping cart right here. We have, what do you call it?
Can you pull a microphone a little bit closer to you, sorry?
Sure, I'm sorry. Right here, there is plywood on this window. There's clothes hanging right here. The very next night, there was clothes hanging all across here. Right here, you can see the AC, which they said they were going to be working on, which is fine, but you've got people in this, there's somebody in that room. And they've got people in there. It was 110 and 111, and I can't even imagine what it would have been there without any AC. So if it's not ready, why is people in there, is what I'm saying. I just, it's been hot. And why are things being advertised, sorry, why are things being advertised as having kitchenettes and showing bedrooms in there? Those, actually, I didn't get back to the, the eight facilities that Blue, what do you call it, Blue Ocean has. He's got eight properties. One's in Fresno, one's in Tulsa, one's in Oklahoma, one's in Las Vegas, and those are the eight that they have here, and it's advertising as 151 units. And then you click on to it, and then you can see these kitchenettes. I'm just a little confused. And if I was looking for a place, I would expect to see what was advertised. I just like transparency. Thank you.
About a minute and 30 seconds left. The clock's not running. You don't have to run. You're good, man.
All right. I'll make it quick. I would just recommend all of you guys go take a look at...
Identify yourself one more time.
Oh, yeah, Kevin Lively. Although they said that Blue Ocean Equities was not the owner of the property, I recommend all of you guys go to their website. You'll see that the Calabasas-based company does own those properties that she mentioned. So go ahead and take a look, and you can see, apparently, on one hand, they are taking ownership of it. Over here, they're saying they're not, everything is as clear as mud. The shell game continues, and I would like to see accountability and transparency. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Estrada. After our last meeting, I thought there was going to be a meeting with the owners. I was, I was at that meeting that was scheduled, it was Tuesday, two days ago. There was no ownership there. Security was there. I got a good feeling about the security of the, of both of the units, the Rio and the Blanco. I would, I appreciated the input of security, but as far as owners, there were, were no owners at that meeting. Also, the owner stated the, the person that was arrested on, at the Blanco, Blanco was not a resident. But I was, I was informed by management that the unit that he was in was, the resident in that unit was his sister. And, like I said, within 48 hours...
Unfortunately, sir, the time is up.
He was back at that same unit. And because of security, then he was dealt with and taken care of.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing on the item and return to the commission for comment and action. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair Bastiatash. First, I want to, I want to thank the neighbors for coming out and talking to us last meeting and again this meeting. and again this meeting. Especially, I want to compliment Mr. Morales. Yes. You know, the fact that English is not your first language and you, you basically only speak Spanish, that's a lot of courage to come up and talk in a public event. So I appreciate that. I was thinking myself, if I lived in Mexico with my poor Spanish, if I would go to a public meeting and, and try to participate. So I congratulate you for doing that. But I do really appreciate the, the community interest. You know, there's really no one solution to homelessness. We've learned this over the last few years. And I've been a strong supporter of the, you know, the navigation centers that were built and other homeless initiatives. And I think that we do need to keep an open mind about how we, how, about the solutions that we come up with. I agree a little bit with some of the community people that this ownership group, you know, there's a lot of different names floating around, and we never really get the clear understanding of who's what to who. But I think that's probably more, and I get it, that, you know, the owners are typically different than the operating agency, operating group that actually manages property. I know that happens a lot. But I, I'd really like to have a little more clarity on who's in charge of what. And as far as the police reports, I, I think that people just stop calling when the police department takes 45 minutes or an hour to get there anyway. And so I don't know that that's a really a good judge of, you know, whether that neighborhood is safe or not. That all said, I'm, I'm interested in trying to come up with a solution to this tonight because I do recognize the need for transitional housing. So I'm going to keep an open mind to the other commissioners' comments and would support any motions that come forward from another commissioner. Thank you.
Commissioner Neal.
I, I want to also thank the community for showing up. I think my biggest issue with this project is the fact that the community was not engaged before the ownership decided to make this move, this really big move in their neighborhood. That's my biggest problem. I did major in social welfare in college, and I, I am an attorney. And I know that we have housing crisis here in Bakersfield. I also know that the ownership has invested a lot of time, money, energy, and vision into serving that crisis. We also have a crime problem in that area. I actually went to South High School, and I lived right there on Hughes Lane in those apartments, right by Walmart. So I know the area very well. I lived there as a child myself. And it's really sad to hear and see what you guys are describing in that neighborhood because I would walk from Hughes Lane, the Wal, the old Walmart, all the way to South High by myself. And my family felt safe letting me do that because there wasn't something like this in the neighborhood. And so what we have here is a clash between the social welfare interests and the private development interests. And the way that you keep those things from clashing is by working together. And unfortunately, that didn't happen on the front end. And so personally, I would like to see a little bit more discussion about how we can address all the issues that the public raised and find a way to figure out who's going to be responsible for what. I think this is going to have to be a joint effort, both private and public, in order to address the issues in that area. I drove by there today myself, and I saw a man pleasing himself. It wasn't on your property. It was right next to the property. But just the fact that you can go past and into that area, and that's the kind of stuff that's at any given time. Another issue for me, and this is something that maybe the owner, if this discussion continues and it's not approved tonight, is when you have multifamily housing, you're going to develop the parking lot, you're going to do like the landscaping and trees. And I think you described some sort of community space or a community kitchen. I would be curious about, you know, what ownership is willing to do in terms of making more space for outside stuff besides drugs and, you know, baskets and collecting, you know, recyclables, like some type of attractive thing on the property that can be for the community that's going to live there. You know, that takes into the account the new character of what you're trying to do. I'm, I'm overall supportive of the concept for what you want to do. The execution, I'm not a fan of. And I think we need to take some time. I don't think it's ready. It's not ready for a yes right now. I think it might be a different kind of yes, like a conditional use, a conditional use permit. And I was happy to hear staff say that your other facility did get a conditional use permit. Things went really well, and then you came back for a general plan. Is that accurate? No, that's not accurate. Okay.
I can clarify on that. So they had a conditional use permit in 2019. That conditional use permit, they did not execute within two years. So after two years, if you do not execute it, then it becomes null and void. So it became null and void. Then they came back with a general plan amendment zone change.
But all the while, they were operating kind of similar to this use?
When they applied for the conditional use permit, no, they were not operating. It was a hotel.
During the two-year period in between? Between that and...
That I am not certain of, no.
Okay. Well, what, the, what, the point here that I'm trying to make is that you did seek a conditional use permit for this type of use. Or, okay, maybe for a different use on that facility. How about that? You saw, you sought a conditional use permit on that facility. You used the facility sometime between then and now as the Rio. And you're singing praises about it. It sounds like it's actually been an effective and good thing. You know, so you, my comment is just maybe consider other avenues for the approval that you want. And even if it is conditional or, or it has a timeframe on it, that'll give us time to see what happens and, and how it's going. And if, and if a more permanent fixture on the zoning and land use designation makes sense. The reason why I'm saying that is because I think that'll also give the motivation that's going to be necessary for the private-public partnership on trying to improve that area and also give us time to see, you know, if this is actually going to be a good thing the way that you're now using the property. Because you still would have the right, right? You explained to me that you have the right to use it how you're using it now. So even if your conditional use permit expired, the only difference would be not having that permanent use, right? So with all that being said, just overall looking at this, I am supportive of the project. I'm not supportive of this application.
Vice Chair Kater.
Thank you for your comments, other commissioners. I just want to first off say to the residents, thank you for coming out. I mostly thank you for making me aware of your neighborhood. I've had the opportunity to drive by three or four times, and I, I did actually, I grew up by South High as well. We moved when I was fairly young, but I have fond young memories of that, that part of Bakersfield. And actually, South High is what brought my family to Bakersfield. My dad's an educator. So I think there was two things that really stood out to me, spending a little bit of time in the neighborhood. One was that the Blanco really is serving a very vulnerable community, and that's admirable. That's a very real need in our community. And then two, the, the residents of the neighborhood have really invested in this place. I think it's an age, it's a neighborhood that time can be unkind to. And the homes and the properties and the sense of community was felt just by spending 30 minutes a couple of times coming through your neighborhood. So I just want to say, I think that is, to me, a huge tension of what we are here to talk about tonight is a sense of community, a sense of place. Our city's a very real crisis and very, I think, you know, we, we have seen a lot of presentations on housing. We always breeze through how half of our state required housing numbers need to come, or more than half, need to come from affordable, affordable units as we continue to produce a lot of market rate housing. And I think seeing projects like this that start to, to work into addressing vulnerable communities, I think, you know, we, something that is very clear in the housing crisis is that when you talk about very low income, we're talking about community members that have often been pushed to the fringes, when in reality, they are the most susceptible and the most likely to feel the impact of the housing crisis. They are the most, they are the closest steps to really life not going well for them. And I think, to me, part of what I, I really appreciated Commissioner Neal's questioning because part of me is challenged to classify this project because at some times, it was presented as a transitional supportive housing. At other times, it was provided as we are an apartment project that people apply, they get approved, they live for a duration of time, and then they move on. And I think, to me, the presentation of that created a bit of, because I think there are very different processes. But that being said, I still think housing is a basic need. Housing is a, besides food and water, a place to, a safe place to sleep, a place to belong is not that far down the list. And, and so providing shelter for individuals, to me, that, you know, that is a need in itself. But it is great to hear other programs. And I actually remember, I, I think I was on the commission for both the CUP process and the zone change of the Rio. And it's, it's very, it was very, you know, projects come before our commission. We rarely see them again. And so it was nice to kind of see resident testimonial and kind of where the project went from, you know, we see it at this kind of static moment. So it was cool. It was very nice to see testimonial from residents and how it has impacted people directly. I think, to me, the, the directive we've been given as a community to provide housing for our citizens is pretty clear. I think the, there's sort of an inverse scale of the amount of housing we're provided based, and then relative to those that need it most. And I think these projects that are often pushed aside, are othered, are placed as to not affect anyone or be a part of anything, fall short of our, of our state's vision to provide housing for all. The flip side of that coin is, I think this project has revealed a very, and I'll just say, a hole in our process in that a community that is very tight-knit, that is very, has, to me, done their role as a community to be a, a place where families can be raised, where neighbors can know each other, were not really even brought into the process. And had it not been for your advocacy in showing up and letting us know, would have not even really been part of the process. And I think, to me, as we look at changing land use patterns, changing how we see commercial sites into residential, I think the need to really be a community that engages the surrounding community, having initial developer meetings, to me, is something that we can do better as a community. And I think, I was glad to hear that there was a meeting in between our last meeting and this one. I haven't heard too much about how it went or what actually happened. So I'm glad that it happened, but I can't really comment on it because I'm not sure what transpired. But so to me, I think what I'm challenged with is, is what are the, what role and what opportunities exist to create a better neighbor relationship? You know, I think that this project is going to impact its neighbors as the, the anecdote of police reports increasing as population increases. An increase of a population is going to bring new citizens to a neighborhood. And how, how is there a better relationship between the neighborhood and the Blanco? And, and to me, as a city, you know, what tools do we have to equip citizens and residents to have conduits to address issues like underlit streets or really feeling, as Mr. Coleman mentioned, that a police call is basically a wasted phone call when there are very violent situations transpiring? And so to me, I would love to continue the conversation here, all of the commissioners. I mean, I think the example, and I appreciate Mr. Johnson for putting it in his report, of the neighborhood trapping, traffic calming toolkit. I feel like, to me, that was a very proactive step forward in the city, being more transparent and engaging residents in solving the issue of unsafe streets. And I would be curious, as far as Mr. Johnson, what, as far as neighborhood safety, what, what tools exist for residents to kind of, to meaningfully engage?
Specifically related to the traffic calming that...
I would say that, that to me is a good reference model. But to me, I don't think that we're hearing about traffic safety tonight. I think we're hearing about general safety. Yeah.
And the reason I was saying traffic safety is because Mesa Grande, I believe that is the street, is really a, a straight shot from plans down south and El Patrero. But El Patrero, I think, kind of skirts down more by the, the gas station as compared to Mesa Grande, which goes kind of, goes in dead end, not dead ends, but, you know, when you're driving down Mesa Grande going south, you see this facility all the way down. So the reason I was saying is traffic calming in that, that area, that could prevent some of the direct connection or correct, direct look at, at this. Other options there are is, I mean, we did look at the census tract to see if this was a low-income area. There could be community development block grant funds, CDBG funds, and this is not considered a low area. So an option there would be is if there are community concerns of we need more lighting, right now, the, the street lighting is basically, if I'm not mistaken, is on PG&E poles. If there's additional lighting that may be needed, is to get together as a community and maybe write the, the council member and express your concern and why you feel more lighting is, is necessary. So lighting being one of those issues for safety. If there's another issue regarding safety that you, you want me to address, I can.
I guess, as far as relationship to, to the police, is there, I mean, some of the, the videos we saw tonight and the frequency of which they were described were, were, and I sadly, I will say, I was speaking with Commissioner Biddle during the break, some of those stories sounded like they were coming from our neighborhood. I, I think it's, I don't say this lightly, but sadly, your neighborhood is not the only neighborhood in Bakersfield right now that is experiencing a rise in these instances. And so I guess, to me, being a home alone, I have small children. What are, what are some healthy conduits beyond calling, waiting an hour and a half, getting a police report in four days? You know, the, the, the community can, like, what are some proactive ways to reach out to this?
Being proactive instead of reactive. Instead of waiting for the knock on the door, to be proactive, you, they really should reach out to one of the, the community relations specialists with Bakersfield Police Department. And I had the number up there, and I can go back to that screen. and I can go back to that screen. The city is broken up into different areas. So it's not just one community relation specialist for the entire city. I believe there's, there's four or five zones. Thank you. Four or five zones. So, so each, each specialist has that zone, and they know what, what is hot topics in that zone. I would recommend that that's probably a good starting point right there and then work from there.
Thank you. And I would just encourage all residents to use this opportunity to engage with staff, provide contact information, get, get any information that you need as far as city services that may be available in your neighborhood. And other than that, I, I think we are the planning commission. We look at land use, we look at zoning, we look at general plan amendments. We do have much more in our little script. But I think the issues we're looking to at night, today, tonight, or some issues that were discussed tonight, I think it somewhat exceed what this advisory body can meaningfully attack or engage. I do think, however, as we look at this application, which is a zone change of a commercial property to an R4, I do think how the era of conditional use, where things are added to a project to kind of disincentivize the applicant, are moving forward. And I do think that there is an aspect of a need being met in a property that is not currently being used. Oh, I guess it is currently being used, which is also confusing part of the application, because I think we've had a quote from the applicant that said they will just keep doing whatever they are currently doing if we deny the project. So, but that aside, I think we're looking at the zoning implications, the land use. And I think it's been such a heartfelt, meaningful, very real conversation. And so I'm still very working through the different factions of the project. So, and be open to other commissioners' comments at this time.
I get to talk. I've been to the Rio and done some stuff with a nonprofit there, a few different outreaches. I think that it, it is a pretty nice facility. I worked with the residents, met with the residents, and have done things on a few different holiday experiences. I think that it is, is doing well. I, my businesses are in the auto mall. I drive by that location all the time. And the rules and the, the plan that you're presenting are not in effect now. And as a business owner, I expected a better business model, an idea of what that's going to look like. Just, I mean, just as a business owner, that's just kind of how we do things. And I don't think, since I've been on the, the planning commission, I've had someone come in and not really having a plan or a better picture of what's coming. I kind of was hoping for that a little bit. I do see the need for this. I think that if it continues as it is right now, it's going to be more of a nuisance in the community. I think that actually having people that are trying and more social service will improve that specific location. The, I just want to say this on a side note real quick. The Bakersfield Police Commission meets at the first Wednesday of every month at 8:00 AM. Let's go. I mean, you should contact Arius. He should be involved. That's his ward. The fact that they've reached out and haven't heard anything is very disappointing. You need to go to the, the fact that this is at 8:00 AM on a Wednesday morning is ridiculous. Anyway, this needs to be one, working people can go to it. That, that needs to get fixed. But that's where changes will, will take effect. We're living in COVID policies where the police are not responding to things that are not super dangerous. And so we need to get back to the way it was where they're actually going to come. That being said, I live by loving your neighbor as yourself. Coming to Bakersfield, I, I don't know if you, you kind of skated around whether you live here or not. I don't think that you do based on some of the stuff that you've said. And that's okay. I believe in investing in our community and making a difference. Loving your neighbor would be notifying those around there. This is the changes. Because I guarantee you, you meet with people as a developer, to anyone watching, developer, my family, that's what we do too, meeting with those around you and saying, what are some of the things that are going on prevents this happening right now? People hating your project and not wanting it to succeed, even though I think that it would be a good thing. I really do think, had there been a really good business model put together, a little bit more compassion for the neighbors and not just everybody's out to get me kind of an attitude. I think that would have been successful. I want my community to thrive. My responsibility is to make sure that developments in Bakersfield are progressive. Now, where does that leave us? I don't know. I'd like to have some hope in it, but driving by this place every day and seeing what's happening there and not really the stuff that is on this list happening now? I mean, it's kind of tough to see the hope. And we make the decision, the decision is the decision. It's over. You know what I'm saying? You got to put yourself, and I'm going to have, we're going to have two different sides. If people upset with us or happy with us when, when this is all said and done. And our decision is make them the best decision for our community, what our community needs. The people that need housing and the people that live there with their families now. So I am, yeah, sorry, that was a lot to just kind of throw out there right now. But I hope that that resonates. You're a businessman. Meet with the people around there, hear their opinions and make some changes. You can make people happy with a little bit. My business, where the guy shot the other guy, that was behind my dealership. And when he fled to the, that hotel. I have security, they called the, they were on site before the police were. It's not fiscally irresponsible for me to fork over tons of money for my security, for my dealerships, but I do it. I do it for my community, for the people around me, because it's a, it's, it's my responsibility and it's your responsibility to love your neighbor. If we're just out to, you know, do things, the way things get done, nothing is going to, let's, let's, we can be, this couldn't be better. This can be better. It could be a great project. It could thrive. You could, you know, make a difference. But the way that this has happened has not been that way. And I don't know what happened the last meeting. It was on the, the non-consent. We saw that. I don't know, Justin, if you guys just didn't have a communication. There should have been someone here last time. And two weeks ago to now, there should be a better business plan. There should be more information about this. The fact that we don't know what the city is doing, who owns it, the city owns it, this and that, the information we got from you has not been very good. This has not been a very good project. The information we've gotten has not been very good. It's very all over the place. And it's frustrating, because at the end of the day, my three kids got to have a, a community that they love and enjoy being a part of. Our kids have to be able to say, this is a great community we enjoy. But doing stuff like this is not going to make that happen. It's not going to achieve what you want to create a successful business. And this is, I want that for you. I want that for all of us. A safe neighborhood for them and us to be able to make a decision that we can stand behind, not knowing who owned it, did own it, what it's going on. It's so confusing. And we're the planning commissioners, the, the public watching this, thinking about, what can we do to make a difference? Well, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what this looks like. I have no idea who owns what. And there's, you know what I'm saying? So I don't, I don't even, I don't know. That's all I'm going to say. I am open to other opinions. I can't see if anyone else has requested to vote because my screen still doesn't do that. No one else wants to speak.
Well, yeah, I wanted to talk about possible motions that we can make right now. Because I don't feel like I'm ready to say yes. I'm not necessarily ready to say no either. Because I, we need this type of, we need housing and we need it. You, you already providing it. We understand that. You want something more permanent so that you can, I guess, once you get a more permanent, yeah, see, I'm still a little bit confused about that because, because I feel like you can continue, you told me, you can continue legally how you are now. But the only benefit, or, or at least the benefit that you described to me about why approval would make sense is that the tenants would feel like this is my more permanent housing versus it's a hotel. So I think that's the only thing I heard that was really in support of distinction, really, that, that, that you made for us. That's, to me, not enough, you know, considering all that's going on. So like I said, I'm on the fence. I, I, I'm not ready to say no, but I'm not necessarily ready to say yes. I think we need to continue discussions. I feel like, I feel like this needs to be continued again. We need to actually get a chance, I don't know if we can, close the hearing, and then have some discussions with the developer and, and private-public partnerships, see what we can do and see how you might want to bring this back, whether you're coming back as a general plan amendment and zone change again, after we've discussed a few things and kind of figured out how to address some of this stuff, or you're coming back as a conditional use permit or something like that. So I guess, with all that said, I think my motion would be to refer it back to staff.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioners cast your votes.
Are we voting already? I, I just wanted to say, you know, I...
Can we?
I, I probably support that, but is there some direction that we're going to provide to staff in this continuance? Or are you just going to flop around there?
No, this is a refer back to staff motion that has been made and seconded. This is in violation, so there's open code violation case that will be monitored. If the applicant decides to return with a conditional use permit, that will need to be made in a timely manner. If they want to come back with a general plan amendment, the same general plan amendment, zone change, which they could, that will also need to be done in a timely manner. And if that's not done, then we can continue with our code enforcement. We can go to code violation hearing. We can start imposing penalties. So there is, there is an emphasis that the applicant move forward one way or another.
Well, I guess I was just trying to say that I, I'd like to see more of a dialogue going on with the city and the, and the developer and the neighbors, and maybe drag the police department in to try to resolve some of these conflicts before it comes back to us again.
Well, I would, I would advocate that the, the community members submit something to the city with their concerns. So we have something to evaluate. Some of the comments made tonight are new to us. We were not aware. Or at least I could say, I was not aware that the city was interested in purchasing this property or was purchasing this property. That is, that's news to me. I'm not the real property management. So it takes time for me to go with the correct department and find that information out. But just finding out tonight, no, I, I can be unprepared if I don't have some of this information ahead of me. So I would advocate that we get concerns from the community submitted to Luis Ramirez. They have his contact information that submitted last time. Or they can just go to the planning department and we can speak with them. In the meantime, I would advocate that they also engage with the community specialists, with the police department, because really that's who should be coordinating those actions with, with the police department, not necessarily planning as a middle, middle person. And then that needs to come back to planning so we can evaluate the project. The applicant needs to give us a business model. We can evaluate that business model, and then we can present everything back to the commission. We're here to gather all that information and present it back. We're not here. It's really on, on the community and it's on the applicant to, to give us the information that we need. And I would appreciate if it was done in advance as opposed to at a public hearing.
And just last, you mentioned earlier at the very beginning of your presentation, the very, when we first started talking about this, that, that time was of the essence for a continuance. Is there a way that we can structure this? Because we don't want to have to kick it to December to be able to talk about a zone change again, if that's what the applicant wants. If we leave this, this matter open, can it come back between now and then or not?
The hearing already closed, Commissioner.
Okay.
So they, if they want to come back for, for review of their general plan amendment and zone change again, it will have to be until the next cycle.
And I will just clarify that, that the cycle is based on city council when they consider, which is November. That doesn't mean we cannot come back to the planning commission earlier. It would just sit in abeyance while it waits for the planning commission window.
So we can hear it again in September, whenever everybody's ready. We don't have to wait till November, December to...
That is, that is correct. As long as you hear it and you make a decision on the general plan amendment, zone change, if that is the course that the applicant wants to continue going down, as long as the planning commission makes a recommendation to city council before the November window, then that's fine. That recommendation can be September or October.
Okay. Thank you for entertaining me and trying to get some clarification. So I'm ready to vote.
So we have a, a motion and a second to refer back to staff?
Motion passes to refer back to staff with Commissioner Lomas absent.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communication items at this time?
We do a couple of things. I'd like to introduce our new secretary. Everybody remembers, most everybody remembers Dana Cornelius. So we have her replacement, Anna Solis. If you'd like to stand up. She is our new secretary for development services.
Congratulations. Welcome.
So with that, we have Veronica, who will be her last one. And Macy, our other secretary, will continue to, to co-sponsor this with Anna. So thank you, Veronica. I appreciate it. She's one of our planners that has done this. So this is above and beyond her, her duties, and we appreciate that.
Congratulations.
We will have an August 17th meeting, at which time we will have a report on subdivision extensions of time. And it would appear that Commissioner Lomas is not here for a reason. But the next meeting, we will be presenting her, her plaque, because it is her last meeting.
Oh. Sneaky, sneaky. She didn't say anything, huh?
Yes, you can sit in her seat when she's gone.
I'd like to make a motion to deny that application.
Does any, oh, Madam Clerk, next item, please. Sorry.
Agenda item eight, commission comments.
Does any commissioner have any comments at this time?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I should have requested to speak. I do. I, I just want to thank the commission for last week's meeting. I wasn't here, but I watched it. And I was very happy to see you guys working with the community. And I mean, you guys have been doing this way longer than me. But it was, it felt really good to like, be able to sit and watch and see what we do without, you know, me actually being a part of that process. So that was good. That's all I wanted to say.
Cool. And, and staff, I appreciate the heck out of you. I know that I, I said some things about information and stuff. It, it gets, it's frustrating to make a decision, and we don't really know a whole bunch. I, I know information comes up last minute. I get that. I totally, and I appreciate you addressing that and bringing that up. We, we appreciate all that you do. And we understand what needs to happen in our community and stuff. So thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 8:47 on August 3rd, 2023.